Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 25th, 7:00 PM in the Parker Room here at the Opera House. Glad to see a tremendous turnout for tonight's workshop about wastewater.[12.82][12.82](Laughter). I guess that's a different night.[18.02][18.02](Laughter).
We should always be so lucky.
But in any event, it's great to have a lot of people here. This is an exciting time for Rockport. The bids for our new Rockport Public Library went out last Friday. So that was the combination of a lot of work over the last couple of years, well, more than a couple of years, but a lot of work over a long period of time by many people. We're well on our way toward having a new public library here in Rockport, and that's a tremendous accomplishment for everybody in town. We have one final issue that we have to talk about, and that's the main purpose of this evening's meeting, that's to talk about the parking situation. And so we're going to do that. We have Will Gartley here from Gartley and Dorfsky, who is the site civil engineer for this project, and he's going to be very helpful in that. We're going to do things a little differently this evening as far as the public comment is concerned, and we'll get to that in a bit, but Deborah Hall, who's our vice chair, is going to lead that discussion, and it will be a facilitated discussion rather than having people come up to the mic individually. Deborah will walk around the room with her microphone and with Jeff Hamilton's assistance. So that's going to be a little different. We're hoping to engage the public in a very respectful way on this issue. First item on the agenda then is a review of the development of the process of the current parking plan, so a little bit of history if you will, and I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Rick Bates to run through that process for us.
Thank you, Ken. Just hopefully with the technology and everything, bear with me because I'm going to be trying to multitask and do two things at once. But what follows are my thoughts about how the parking and intersection solutions evolved over the entire process of this library project. Admittedly, they're my interpretations of what happened backed up with facts. There are only a few of us still...
Multitask and do two...
Oops. Sorry. Admittedly, there are...[133.16][133.16](Laughter). There are only a few of us still standing after so many years to get us to where we are today. You can watch the live streams that are available, and they give you a pretty, very good picture, but they only give you a partial one.[147.72][147.72](Laughter).
Here we go.
We know we're live.
Okay. Yeah, we're...
My goal is to give you some sense of how the process evolved to get us to where we are today. To get a better understanding, we need to go way back to 2004, when the work of meeting the needs of the Town of Rockport Public Library began. This was formalized with the development of the comprehensive plan. In that plan, expansion of the building and better parking are identified as important needs for the future. Leaving location out of consideration, parking has always risen to the, near the top of needs for the future of the library. Too little or too much has been the topic of debate for years, but the issue of parking has clearly been part of the conversation all of this time. So fast forward from 2004, eight years. Fast forward past eight years of meetings, discussions, debate, and the RES site became the preferred option. Once again, not getting into the location debate, one of several reasons that the RES site was preferred by many people was the capacity for significant, high-quality parking. Because of the continuing debate and lack of consensus, the Library Committee engaged the services of Jane Haskell, a mediator, process person, to conduct a listening tour of all five villages in Rockport, and many of you participated in that work. This was completed in January of 2014. And while not exactly scientific, let me get the... Where is that? How do we make this big? While not exactly scientific here, oops, I guess I can't do it.[273.12][273.12](Laughter). While not exactly scientific, you can see, this is the Word Cloud, which is all of the data that's collected from all of the comments that are made in all of those five different meetings where, I can't remember, there was 100 and some odd people that participated in that meeting. You can see space obviously is the biggest one, but parking is right up there as an important factor. So while it's not really scientific, it is still part of the discussion. In March of 2015, the building steering committee was created to consider all the possibilities, and using the data collected from the listening tour, they were charged with making a recommendation to the Select Board on how to move forward. All options were to be considered by the steering committee, with both library lots were considered in play when it came time to making a recommendation. Given the fact that both lots were given to the town to be used for the library, using it for a library parking or another building is consistent with the gift and the acceptance by the town in 1946, '49, '7, something like that. So it is consistent with that. Using it as a park and restricting its use for the stated purpose is not consistent with that deed. This is an important consideration to remember. I sat in on nearly all of those meetings, and adequate accessible parking was one of the centerpieces of each of the eight different options that were reviewed by the steering committee. In my opinion, one of the several key factors for that committee in selecting the RES site as the preferred option was the fact that there was plenty of availability of quality accessible parking. A lot of debate about the site, and after a lot of debate about the site and several town votes, the board opted to move forward with the design of a new library at One Lime Rock Street. In November 17th, on November 17th of 2015, the Select Board formed the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee and charged them with recommending an architect and developing a new design for the Rockport Public Library at One Lime Rock Street, or on the library lot, which is now known as Memorial Park, or a combination of both sites. They were very clear then that the park could be used. The mission statement developed outlined that the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee was to focus on planning, costs, and long-term use. Secondary issues also to be considered are building efficiencies, archives and storage, site planning, and safety for the library to be built at the combined site of the Memorial Park and One Lime Rock Street. Members of that committee, some of them are sitting here, included Jan Rosenbaum, who was the chair, he was also the chair of the steering committee, Tracy Murphy, who was the Select Board representative to the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee, Joe Stanowski, Heather Matkey, Eric Denny, Stevie Cumbel, Eric Frederick, and Ann Philly. Ben Blackman and I were non-voting members of that committee. Also, to assist that committee, John Schultz, an architect from Camden, helped with building how we were going to select an architect and helped in that process. He was very helpful. As part of that process, the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee developed a plan with Select Board approval to send out an RFQ for architects to participate in a design competition. This would showcase examples of how they would approach the new library design. The goal was to get creative ideas. Six architects were selected to take part in that competition, and Dick Reed was ultimately selected as the architect for the new design in March of 2016. Of note... Let me get to my... Okay. Of note was the fact that Steve Smith was considered by some on that committee very strongly. Many of the Ad Hoc Library Committee, Planning Committee liked the site plan, parking, and intersection concept he presented, and that's what you're seeing here. This is Steve Smith's original plan back in March of 2016. Another important note, when we're looking at schematic designs like this one and the others that I'm going to show you, two things to keep in mind. First, they were developed using a different site plan, building, and footprint than we now have. And second, they are simply pretty pictures, as Will Gartley describes them, without taking account the actual conditions on the ground. So once they get out there and survey and they mark everything out, they can start to say, as one example is, "There's a telephone pole right where we've got a car supposedly parked." And that, you know, that's a lot of extra cost. So once the surveying and engineering work was completed, some of the original assumptions changed, impacting parking numbers in the final design. There was a lot of discussion about a variety of parking options that Dick Reed came up with as a result of his work, starting with his first two conceptual plans. Let me see if I can get them. Let's see if this is the right one. Yes. So this is one of the Reed conceptual plans, which closed off the lower end of Lime Rock Street. And then there's another one here that made, kept Lime Rock Street and created a way for cars to go through this way. It created the parking up in front of Richard Anderson's house and Beth Davis's house up here. These plans were rejected by the Ad Hoc Library Committee for a number of reasons, not the least of which because of neighbor concerns. It was not really discussed any further. Further plans were developed by Dick Reed and his team. These schematic designs included, let's see, Option A, I think, yep. Option A, which is a parallel parking option, and then Option, where's Option A1? I think this might be Option A1, hopefully.
That's probably it.
This one here. Option A1, which is an angled parking option, bringing traffic down Lime Rock Street, and then Option B, which is one-way traffic up Lime Rock Street and angled-in parking. These plans were scrutinized at length, and in the end, the parking was optimized using the perpendicular parking space option in the original Smith concept, getting us to the 14 space total, which I'm not going to... It's the same plan as we've got now, and I... Let's see if I can get out of here. Sorry for this. That's... Oh, here it is. This should come up, this should come up fine, hopefully. Oh, it didn't do it.[762.25][762.25](Laughter). There it is. Hopefully this will do. So this is the final Reed plan that went to the voters. This is the final Reed plan that went to the voters. Let's see. This plan was incorporated into the Reed design, and that's very similar to Steve Smith's original plan. So there's some tweaks in it and some changes, but the concept is very similar to Steve Smith's original plan. Ultimately, we all know this plan was defeated at the polls by nine votes in November of 2016. The town needed to regroup and move forward. The challenge we faced was establishing just why the proposal failed, so a new plan could be developed that was acceptable to the voters. The town secured the services of Portland Research Group to collect data by doing a town-wide survey, and I'm guessing some of you participated in that survey. One of the questions the board paid particular attention to was what the impact of the parking had in their decision-making process when they went to vote. That was something that board spent a lot of time on that. They spent a good deal of time framing that question, so part of the research was intended to focus on the parking question. There were other questions that they were focused on, but for the purposes of tonight, that question was specifically added into that survey for that reason. So the result of that work revealed, among other things, when asked the question of their impression of the 14 parking spaces proposed, only 28% of the respondents had a negative response to that issue. 37% had a positive response, and the rest, 35%, were neutral when it came to that question. Armed with the information collected in the survey, the Select Board embarked on an effort to hire a new architect and to start the process of designing the new library. As we all know, Steve Smith was selected to be the new architect. His original plan, the one that ultimately became the basis for the Reed intersection and parking plan, simply migrated into the planning for the new library as his design was based on that. So it was just a simple transition because that was always part of the plan. There was little discussion and little controversy in this, and it had been in public view for quite some time and, according to the research, generally accepted by people. Many people do accept it as the best option, and this was the same intersection and parking scenario that the Select Board had supported the year before when they put the article on the warrant. I say this knowing full well that some of the immediate neighbors had expressed concerns about how the change impacted them, and some members of the park committee would never support any incursion into what they considered the park. It represented a compromise for some of the people that felt that the RES site provided the best parking option by providing adequate parking close to the building. It is important to note that the board didn't specifically vote to approve the Reed parking plan, nor did they specifically vote to approve the Smith parking plan, nor did they vote for either building designs themselves. They approved the overall design that included the overall site and intersection plans in both cases. The primary concern as the process moved forward was making the cost work, and to do that, the funding of the plan was segregated into two separate parts for bonding and fundraising purposes. The board voted, and ultimately voters supported, to bond $1.5 million to build a new library exclusive of the parking and intersection work. That would be paid for with grant money and be budgeted this year, in the current year. The 14 perpendicular parking place plan has been the parking option since the summer of 2016, and it has not significantly changed. The new building was designed with that site plan in mind. This lot is a challenge. We knew that going in, but out of a challenge often comes a good design. Will Gartley, Steve Smith, the traffic engineers, the landscape architects have all worked hard to come up with a design that works. Does it make everyone happy? No, it doesn't. But it does meet all of the challenges that the building, the site, and the intersection present, and it also meets the parking needs of the community members that will frequent the new library. All that said, excuse me, I am confident that there is a compromise here that will get us over the finish line and we can move forward past this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We'll go now into a section on discussion of possible alternate parking plans, and this is where we're going to take our public comment. It's going to be a facilitated discussion led by our vice chair, Deborah Hall, who has some experience in that, and assisted by Jeff Hamilton, and so we hope that everybody will participate in this, and Jeff, I think, is going to kick it off with some ground rules for this part of the meeting.
Sure. Soon as I see where my easels are going.
I got you. Yeah, just block Mark out of the way.
Just make sure nobody lobs any over this way.
Oops. We can get the hot seat. So that's the thing that works. Will... Well, you got other slides up there?
I do. I have no idea what...
We have no idea where those ones are. Which slides are they?
I think there's a PowerPoint in there someplace.
This, I sent them to you twice.
Yeah.
Recently, this afternoon again.
But they went to...
What's the name of it?
What's the name of it?
I think it said T O R PowerPoint.
Bruce, do we have that up here?
Right here.
Right there. Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Can you pull that up?
I can try.
Just go to slide.
Oh, damn.
No, go to slideshow over there and then just start it. At the top, Rick.
Yeah.
See where it says slideshow?
Yeah, no.
Along the menu. Keep going to the right, to the right. Keep your finger all the way...
Play button over here. I don't have to pull over anything.
Play from start all the way over to the left.
Yeah, I can't see. Play from start?
Yeah, right there. There you go.
Oh, there you go.
And then when you want to advance, just click it.
I got it.
Just click it. Yeah.
All right. Deborah and I are trying to do this a little bit. I'm asking them to...
You should give Jeff the mic.
Turn on the lights so you see your mic.
I would avoid to assume this before.
I saw it. It's pretty short. Sweet. It's not a big issue. You know, however, be respectful.
There's 36 people watching.
La la la. Hey.
All right, here we go. Okay.
Yeah, that too.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, as we mentioned before, the meeting, the subject of here, this meeting, is to have the public openly participate in library parking option analysis and the discussion, thereby providing the Select Board with input and a basis for which we can move forward. So the desired inputs out of all this are, you'll see multiple options. We'll have those presented. We'll take a look at the options, and obviously, the other input is the open discussion in the vetting process. And the desired outcome then becomes us making sure that we've had a proper dialogue around these options and get a good sense of what the community desires and not only all the stakeholders, okay? It's neighbors, it's the community, it's the taxpayers. All this has to come together in order for this to work. So with that, if I could go to the next slide, please, Rick. I want to talk a little bit about respect for people and respect during meetings. And oftentimes, when you're in a professional environment, and in my case, in a corporate environment, these types of things, particularly as items are discussed which may or may not have a high level of emotional energy behind it one way or another, we just go back to the ground rules on these. Bring that up, Rick. Next one?
Next one?
Okay. So a couple of things to remember if we could. Oftentimes, cell phones and ringing are interruptions, so if you could, just take a moment to put those on mute. In this meeting, it would be great if we spent the time and put the energy behind seeking to understand options, not taking a position in discussion, but just understanding and being able to learn from others.
Often times...
Deborah's going to run the show here pretty quick.
Yeah. How do you like me behind you now?
Okay. Well, we'll spend some time, let's challenge ideas rather than people or groups.
In this meeting, it would be great if we spent the time and put the energy behind seeking to understand...
Turn it off. Are we done?
Okay.
I would say something, but you guys wouldn't like it.
All right. We're going to move those easels too, because I want you all to see Mark's face. Okay. Let's share relevant facts and data. Again, this discussion is around parking options, not all the other things that have happened in the past. It's about parking. All right. Stay on the topic. Let's speak with respectful tone and volume to each other. It's just a good thing to do. Seek out and consider other points of view. As we speak, let's be brief and concise. One thing that I try to do is if I can make my point in one breath, I try to do it. Don't interrupt each other. Disagree without being disagreeable. It's okay not to agree, but let's not be disagreeable about it. Side conversations and comments are distracting, unless we can, we can try to keep that to a minimum. We'll try to seek agreeable outcomes. And then last but not least, I mean, we're talking about parking spaces here. We're not talking about where nuclear missile silos are going to be located in town. We're talking about parking spaces. In the end of this, we're all friends, we're all neighbors, we're all community members, and it's important that we work through the process, but at the end of the day, we come out with something that we can work forward and go, and that we go tackle, as a community, the next set of issues in the town. So with that, I will turn it over to Deborah, and she will explain the process to a much greater level of detail.
Hopefully, I won't explain the process too much. We'll get into the process. So I know that, you know, there's a lot that we don't agree on, or that people in this room don't agree on, and I hope that you had a chance to take a look at the concerns here. The concerns were done in a way that we tried to list the concerns that we've seen, we've heard, live streams, demonstrate, and please, yeah, if you don't have one of these... It's, we sent it out in advance. We made lots of copies here. Feel free to sort of rummage through them as, you know, we're doing this. The idea is that, it's to say that we hear your concerns, we know these points have been made, they've been made effectively, they've been made very passionately, but let's try not to restate those today. We and the Select Board have heard them, and so what we're hoping that we can do is to think about, talk about what unifies us. You know, we love Rockport. We all want to build a library, right? We're all neighbors and friends and residents of this fantastic community, so let's go forward with that in mind. So the tiny bit of process is that what we're going to do is put up the four different Reed plans, starting with the perpendicular one that went to bid. Then we're going to move into the diagonal ones that...
The Reed plans or the updated ones?
Yeah.
The updated?
They start, right. They started off, in some cases, they were Reed plans, the diagonal ones are the updated ones, right? I think that when we get to the north end, Rick...
End show.
I think when we get to the north end, that's a Reed plan, isn't it? Anyway, north end, west end, whatever you want to call it. So we're going to start with perpendicular. We're going to go to diagonal. We're going to go to parallel, and then we're going to go to the north end slash west end. I don't have my direction straight as to which one is right. And what we want to do is to talk about some of the pros and cons of each of those. We also want to talk about, you know, is there a little different way of doing one of those alternatives? Is there a modification that could respond to some people's concerns that we haven't thought about in the past? So that's kind of the process that we want to follow. Jeff is going to take some notes here, and we're going to do a lot with, we're going to ask Will to help us out on a lot of things. There have been a lot of numbers, percentages, et cetera, that have been floating around, but we're going to all, first off, we're going to all understand that everybody's concerns are valid, everybody's concerns are heartfelt, they're passionate about it, and we're going to understand that Will's numbers are the numbers that we're going to work with, okay? Because we can't work with everybody else's interpretation of numbers. I ask you to stay away from, you know, what's a sufficient number of spaces, because that's one of those things we're never going to agree on, I mean, the people in this room. It's all in, you know, the eye of the beholder, and it's something that the Select Board of the town, however the decision is going to be made, that's something that they're going to have to wrestle with, and we probably don't want to wrestle with that today, because I don't think we'll come up with a solution. So can we do the perpendicular?
Which option are we going to call this?
Perpendicular.
This is the one that went out to bid, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the one that went out to bid. I don't call it 14 space only because that's not intrinsic to it. It may not be 14 spaces at the end of the day. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, but let's call it perpendicular, or 90 degree. Either way, it works. So with respect to this one, this is something that I think that Will had come up with, Will, is this correct? As the Ad Hoc Planning Committee had their discussions, and they were talking about diagonal, which we'll talk about next, not now, then Will had come up with the idea of perpendicular because we were struggling with two, they were struggling with two-way, one-way, which we don't really need to get in quite yet, and two-way or one-way street on Lime Rock. And with perpendicular, Will had noted that you could maximize parking by adding, I think that the diagonal at the... And with perpendicular, Will had noted that you could maximize parking by adding, I think that the diagonal at the time that they were looking at it had ten spaces, and you could maximize parking by turning it from forty-five degrees to ninety degrees and putting an extra four spaces on top. Is that pretty much how that came about?
Yeah, that's close, yeah.
But, okay, so that's, so that's how, I mean, that's where we are, just with perpendicular, but before we go further on options on that, I'd like to take a look at, what are the great things about the plan that perhaps could be on any plan, on any alternative, whether it's diagonal, parallel, et cetera? And that is the parking on Union and on Russell. So I think that Will shows now, as he says, you know, with the pretty pictures, I think at one time had five, five parking places on Union, and now it's four by the time he actually does his numbers and he can talk about that. And it calls for cutting into the park off of Union. The idea being that we eliminate the situation where, as we all know, Bay Chamber concerts, et cetera, that you have parking on two sides of the road, and it all of a sudden, Union becomes a one-way. So this helps that, cuts into the park a little bit in order to do it, and also makes for a safer, you know, entrance exit of those, of those parking spaces. Would you agree with that, Will? Anything else that you would add there?
Nope.
And the same kind of thing is done down, down here at the bottom on Russell, thank you, with those three spaces. Again, the idea is to take those, you know, tuck them in rather than being out on the street as they have been. So we also have, there's also a handicap parking, one handicap parking. And there's also room for drop-off. So two spaces, is that correct, Will?
Yep, there's about a two-car drop-off.
Two-car drop-off, so if you're dropping off a book, picking up a book, want to drop somebody off because you need to go park a little further away, those are all, that's available as well. So you've got four, three handicapped, and two-space drop-off. And that can be the case, as I said, regardless of whether we're talking parallel, diagonal, those are, you know, some probably pretty good aspects of the plan. Does anybody disagree with that, or would like to comment on it?
I just wonder, my name is Askair. I just wonder, what do you mean by a drop-off? Is that a big thing coming from another library or from the post office or something, or is it me and you coming and deliver one book into the library?
Let me ask Ben to answer it after, right?
It will be for you to sort of drop off, it's like fifteen-minute parking for people just to run in and run out, to take care of things really quick. I mean, I'm sure our delivery truck will probably pull up there if it's empty and easy, but they're in and out in about five minutes, so it's mostly for patrons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will, I know that in some of the pretty pictures, that there was, there were, why do I say this, but there were five, five parking spaces there, we went down to four. Why is it now at four?
Because right there, there's a utility pole, and so in most of those pretty pictures, that pole was right through the middle of that last parking space that was on Union Street. So it's as simple as that.
You have to have your sunroof open.
Yeah. And obviously, moving utility poles is not an expensive endeavor, so that didn't seem worth doing.
So is there, I know in one of the read plans originally, using this kind of setup, that they had depicted four or five parking spaces here, and is there any?
When you say here, on Russell?
On Russell, I'm sorry, on Russell.
Yep, I mean, if you look back at one of those read options, so the stop bar right here and the crosswalk, there's a distance from there to the last parking space that we have to meet, and in a lot of those pictures, the parking was right up to the stop at the intersection, and that's just not a legal design at an intersection. We need twenty-five feet from that stop bar to the end of the last space. So that eliminated one space. I mean, we could continue parking down Russell, it just never got discussed much, and we always focused on directly in front of the library, not continuing down in front of any of the other residences. But there is right-of-way room and space to do more formal parking further down Russell, if that was ever.
One more space, probably one more space down Russell.
Yeah, yeah, it would depend, I mean, as you start going and looking at where the right-of-way is compared to where people's lawns and steps and landscaping are, there's sometimes, you know, a lot of people are maintaining land that's out within the right-of-way, and so it probably wouldn't be very desired to start taking that away and putting parking there.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to ask questions now from the select board? And this is for Will. Will, in front of those parking spaces, there's a five-foot sidewalk.
On Union?
No, in front of the fourteen spaces.
Right here?
Yeah, right there, there's a five-foot sidewalk, and that, it ends up near Rich Anderson's house. I guess there may be a question that that sidewalk is there for safety, so people theoretically walk in front of their cars instead of behind them. But today, I went to Staples, and I walked behind thirty cars to get to the store. So my question for you is, could that sidewalk be eliminated?
Yeah, I kind of thought this question might come. I mean, I think the difference between like this and Staples is, is that at a big parking lot like at Staples and Shaw's, there is no space for internal parking, and people expect people to be walking there. This is a street, so I know that most people, or a lot of people, will park and then take the shortest route to the entrance, especially because Lime Rock Street's not a very busy street, so when, you know, you get out of your car, you see nobody coming, you're not gonna go up onto the sidewalk and down to the crosswalk. But it's awful hard for me to recommend to the town that you don't provide a safe way to get from your car to the crosswalk, that you're actually leading people to walk in the street. That just, and for a five-foot wide strip, it would be tough for me to recommend that, that's all. I mean, you certainly could not build it if you didn't want to.
But there's no, there's no code or anything that you know of that would prevent us from eliminating that sidewalk?
No, it just seems counter to, you know, intuition to design a parking area where you're asking people to walk directly into the street and not to the crosswalk.
I think some people have observed to us, not to, you know, be saying one thing or the other, preferring one thing or the other, but some people have indicated to us that they didn't really, really feel that they would walk toward a sidewalk and away from the building when they could just walk across the street. And it is Lime Rock and not heavily trafficked, so there are some thoughts along those lines, as Doug mentioned, but.
You're right there. You went right by him.
Okay, regarding the sidewalk in front of the cars, there is a sidewalk on Lime Rock Street, which goes up almost to the corner where it turns into Hughes. And I'm wondering if there are any plans to perhaps bring that sidewalk in front of the parking spaces down to the existing sidewalk and up and rebuild it. The second point is that for several years, I have indicated to various select board members, usually my dear husband here, that parking on the side of Union opposite the park is incredibly dangerous, and when there are a lot of events, narrows the street significantly, and have urged this town to eliminate parking there. There is no parking, there's a big yellow line, I believe, from Summer Street down to about Church or somewhere in that vicinity, and I've suggested bringing it all the way down and around the corner. That would make also the ability of people for turning from Union onto Lime Rock or onto Russell, it would give people coming behind them a little bit more room to come around them if they need to, or that person to come over a little further, because as we all know, people coming up Central and turning onto Union often go very wide, and if you want to make that left turn, you're sitting in the middle of the intersection. So those are my two comments.
I like this plan. I, I think it speaks to one of the aspects that I'm concerned about the most, and that is social justice, that it allows for people to be able to come to the library that live outside the village. It's like, it's like hanging out a welcoming sign. I like it.
Well, I apologize in advance, because I'm, I'm feeling like it might be a little more beneficial for us to look a little bit at all the proposed plans before we microanalyze this particular one, to get a sense of what other options are out there. It just seems like if we spend so much time trying to do lots of little tweaking to this, we will miss the opportunity to look at some other plans like this library and the park, which to me, addresses a lot of our concerns a little better.
Will, I have a question about the handicap parking.
Yes.
Is there a requirement for how many spaces we need for handicap?
There is, and it's based on the total number of spaces we're providing. And so because we're not providing many spaces, one is actually adequate.
Okay, great. And I saw that there's a handicap spot below on Russell Street?
Um, no.
Can you put that up? Isn't there a handicap?
Nope, there's, there's three spaces here, the slope at that section of the road is pretty nice, it's pretty relatively flat, but those aren't designated as handicap.
Oh, okay. Is there a, there is an elevator planned in the library, correct?
There is.
Okay. So it could be a handicap entrance.
The lower level.
The lower area on Russell.
Yeah, the difficulty is getting a spot that actually meets handicap accessibility requirements.
It looks though like there's a lot of room there to play with, in terms of designing something that would work for a handicap accessible spot. I don't, I think it's probably easier in the sense that it's not on a slope, like it would be on Lime Rock Street. So what I'm thinking is, what I, my understanding is that the reason the library had to go off the size of the road and extend out into Lime Rock Street is because of the handicap accessible access? Is that correct?
I'm not sure I'm following your question.
Well, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but the reason that the library, the reason the road has to be so significantly changed is because the library was designed in such a way that it extends out into Lime Rock? Is that correct?
No, not really, because this, this design is almost identical to what the read plan was, and that, that building was totally different than this building, so really, we took the same design. And this intersection change originally came from when Dick Reed hired Goral Palmer, who was a traffic engineer down in Southern Maine, and they did actual traffic counts and a traffic study, and they had somebody sit there and count who was turning what directions on different days. And they came back, presented their findings, so we knew kind of what the habits were and what the traffic patterns were. But when they presented that, they also sent a sketch that looked almost like this, saying that they thought that a change to the intersection would be beneficial. Right after that, those sketches were sent to MDOT, and there were multiple conference calls that I listened in on, discussing that exact layout. And then it wasn't too long after that that we pursued the MPI program, which is the Main Municipal Partnership that DOT has, where they, if it's a state road and a town wants to make an improvement, that they'll participate in, in funding that. So that's how that all came about. So it really, this design, we pretty much gave this to Steve and said, here's what you've got to work with, when he was rehired to move forward.
Jenna, just to your point, before I forget to mention, my understanding from Will is that there is a curb there, there will be a curb there on the spaces on Russell. So somebody who is mobility challenged, you know, if they can get up the curb, then, then they've got a straight shot, you know, with, you know, into the building with the elevator, that could take them, you know, up to, up to the other floor. And there is some on Union Street, there is some slope, I think not a lot of slope, I don't think, but there is also a curb there, but otherwise, and that sidewalk takes you across a crosswalk, which would take you straight into the first level, the higher level of the building. You can use the, you know, the ramp and so forth, so.
Okay, thanks. I mean, the curb is such an easy fix. I just want to be really clear, Will. Am I mistaken that the library could not be built on the site as is right now? I mean, why?
No, you're correct on that, because once we gave this intersection design and layout to Steve, he made the building footprint fit in such a way that now there isn't enough room to go back and put Lime Rock Street where it was. I do have another plan that actually has this layout overlaid on, and at some point, I'm assuming we'll get to it, but it lets you see the difference between where Lime Rock is now and where it's proposed to be. It's not a huge difference, but there's not enough room to keep Lime Rock where it is.
And so it's not about handicap accessibility and entering into the building on Lime Rock? It's not about a level of handicap accessibility?
Well, it's, but it's also about the floor-to-floor elevation difference. So we've got an elevation down here at Russell, the first, the lower level floor is only about a foot higher than the street right here, that's bare minimum. And then I think we have a floor-to-floor of ten or eleven feet, I can't remember, so that sets the eleven feet, that sets the floor elevation of this floor. Well, I've got to be able to get from the road elevation that's here to the first floor. So by moving the intersection thirty feet, even though this wasn't the reason it was done, it gained me two feet of elevation from where I'm starting, which means I can have a more reasonable slope at this intersection for this drop-off, and then it gets me as close as I could get. It's very tight.
And the last quick thing I want to say is that with snow removal, I would imagine that all the snow will be pushed in front of those parking spots and probably in front of the proposed sidewalk. So that's losing another at least five feet with big mounds of snow of the park.
We remove, periodically, we go out and remove snow, so it clears up parking.
Well, I am Don Ross, I live in five Lime Rock.
Yep. Yep.
Speak directly into the mic.
Yep, you're right here, correct?
Correct. And so I got up this morning and took my tape, went out and measured from where the pavement is, right in front of my house, on my side, and over to where you show eighteen or whatever number of parking spaces you want. Which was about fifty feet. So we've lived there for twenty years, and we know, basically, if you'll turn this, basically, we know that when the library is busy most of the time, when it's not, and when there's cars parked in front of our house, you know, and how many, and if it's two, four, or five, and we know the time of day. So, but the point I'm making is, if you have, if that's fifty-foot wide, and you take it all the way down from right in front of my house and next to Anderson's house, all the way down, that is a tremendous amount of pavement. Including the sidewalks and everything. It doesn't look that large when you just see it on a drawing like that, but when you step it off, it is huge. You know, so. I don't know. Is that supposed to be eighteen parking spots? Fourteen?
It's fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen, okay. Any way to reduce the number of parking spots? That's a question.
Yeah, I could take an eraser and just boom, 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 boom. Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a way to reduce.
I'll bring you a dear racer. But it is, I just want people to know that there's a one huge amount of asphalt.
Yeah, so just dimensionally, the existing road right up here, I put a bunch of dimensions on there, because I was anticipating that we're gonna talk about widths and that type of thing. The existing road where we match in up by Rich Anderson's house is just over twenty-two feet wide. Where we have the ninety-degree parking spaces, we have twenty-four feet, which is a typical standard for needing to back out of a ninety-degree parking space. And we also have twenty-four feet down here where the handicap. And we also have 24 feet down here where the handicap space is. And then the spaces are nine-foot wide by 18 feet, and then the sidewalk is five feet. So they're all actually less than what the town's own road standards require under the standards and the ordinance.
So if...
Pardon? No, you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, I mean, you're right there. I mean, 24 plus, you know, 18 and five, I mean, it's just under 50 feet.
So I, I, I encourage you, I forgot to mention that originally, but I encourage you not to have tons of traffic, but I encourage you to look at those stakes because Will has staked out this, this plan in, in the park. And as I know, when I did construction in my house, when you get it three-dimensionally, it looks very, you know, very different than it does on a piece of paper. So, but we're also going to talk about some comparisons of green space versus square footage and all that stuff, and depth into the park, you know? I hate to use the word encroachment because I don't mean for that to be sort of pejorative, but if somebody has a better word for me, that's more neutral, I'd be happy to hear it. But anyway, we're going to talk about all that in a minute, but, but we'll take two more questions on this one, and then we're going to move into diagonal. And when we move into diagonal, we still, you know, it's not like we're not going to talk about this, but we want to make sure we get to the other alternatives.
Thanks, Stephanie Lash. Just a point of clarification. Could you tell me, is this a two-way street that you've got Lime Rock on this schematic? And what is your thinking about two-way versus one-way versus up or down versus stopping it? What are your thoughts on that?
Can we, can we say that one, Stephanie, for when we get to diagonal? Because that's like right in the cross of the diagonal discussion, but we'll be right there. This one, sorry.
This one depicts, this one assumes that this is two-way street with the perpendicular because you can back, you can, Will can explain for himself, but this one does assume perpendicular, but some of the other ones assume one-way for reasons that we'll get into in a minute. So one more, I think Rich had his.
Okay, Will, I mean, I, since we have to use your numbers and not anybody else's numbers here, what, what's your understanding about the, Ben did a traffic study, he's, he's been tracking parking over the last six months, or this last six months of 2018. And so what is your, on what basis have we made these decisions using his data? What do you understand about his data? What's the average number of cars parked there in a day and that kind of thing?
Sorry, Rich, I'm gonna, I'm gonna exercise my prerogative to say we're not going to get into numbers of parking spaces right now. I mean, and the need for numbers of parking. We're just going to talk about the alternatives right now. And then, I mean, obviously, that is an issue. It's an issue, Rich, it's an issue that's in the three pages of Concerns. We know it's an issue. Everybody knows it's an issue, but we are, we're just trying to focus on, in a productive way, on these plans. So we're gonna, I think we're gonna move ahead at this point to the diagonal. Sorry. Okay, one more. I said we're gonna do two, but we'll do three. This is it. Then we'll move to diagonal.
Anybody from Lime Rock Street? I just wanted to, to Don's point, a consideration that just came to mind for me is, after heavy thorn.
After?
Oh, yeah.
After heavy rain or snow melting, ground absorbs, asphalt doesn't. Do the storm drains handle that amount of water running down into, there's one storm drain at the corner there? That's pretty difficult.
Yeah, so we've actually added a considerable amount of drainage in our design. I can go, I didn't, I, I turned a lot of that detail off on these pictures just because the, the site plan is so busy with detail that it's hard to see the stuff that we were focusing on. But in the actual site plan, we've added new catch basins in the parking, we've got a couple new catch basins at the intersection. And so we've, we've done a lot of drainage work on, on this.
Okay, can we move to diagonal?
Yellow, the yellow button.
Everybody, when you, when you talk, I have to tell myself the same thing. You have to put it really close, or it doesn't pick up, right? Kind of like, who is it? Beyonce? Is that what? Okay.
Oh, that's the...
Is it down below?
I think it's this one right here. Uh, there it is.
Okay.
How does he make it so it's full screen?
Uh, I don't want to, no, go up to the plus sign up there, like under, top center, there's a plus sign, try that. Oh, right here? Yeah, try that. Yep.
Hit it again.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, there we go.
Okay, and one thing I meant to say, somebody asked, I think it was Don that asked, well, you know, do you have to have 14 spaces or can you have less? Yes, I mean, that's all decisions that are going to be made, okay? So just because one plan says it's 14 spaces doesn't mean that that's ultimately what the Select Board of the Town or whatever adopts. So we're talking perpendicular versus diagonal versus parallel. We're not, you know, we're certainly constrained in a lot of cases by how many parking places can go in, but it, just because it fits doesn't, you know, automatically mean that that's what we do. So, yes, that's open. Open for discussion, certainly. So this is the diagonal version, and at one point, I know Reed and company had come back with diagonal coming down the other direction. And, and then, and then, and then ultimately, I guess they wanted to see the B, they wanted to see the intersection plan, which was B, and that wound up having the diagonal parking going this direction. But either way, it assumes one-way on Lime Rock, and I turn it over to Will to explain that.
Right, so this one-way discussion has been going around for quite a while, but on the, in the one plan that showed it, and this is 60-degree parking, and this shows 10 spaces, and it assumes that Lime Rock is one-way at least from the intersection of Union to where Rich's house is. And there's, like I said, there's 10 spaces there. Believe it or not, those 10 spaces, the impact into the park is the exact same as 10 perpendicular spaces. And the reason for that is, is because the angled spaces, the distance straight up and down Lime Rock is longer. The spaces are nine feet, but once you turn them, now you've got a hypotenuse there, so it's 11 and a half. And so I, I was actually surprised when I did those calculations, and I double-checked everything, thinking, all right, how's that? Because every, I think everybody assumed that the angled parking 60-degree would be less, but it really, it doesn't. So the discussions about one-way, though, and the reason why we left it back in 2016 and ended up with 90-degree parking was that there was a lot of discussion about forcing every vehicle to go out Lime Rock and use. If, with the 90-degree parking, you can come in off Union, park, and you can go back out off of Union, but if it's one-way, 60-degree parking, everybody has to leave going out Hughes Street. That didn't seem to go over very well and wasn't popular back then, and that's why it didn't get revisited again now. The one-way in the other direction made the drop-off really difficult, and that just didn't seem to carry much weight. The other thing is, every option that we did showing diagonal parking going one-way towards Union Street also showed the old intersection remaining and not changing to this configuration. So whether it's angled parking at 60 degrees or parallel parking, it really means that all vehicles have to go out Hughes Street to get back out.
So we will, we will do the numbers. As I said, at the end, we have, we have some numbers that we can show you that Will put together in terms of percentage of green space. You have that right, I don't want to go through it yet.
Okay, yeah.
But we will, we will show you that after we go through the four plans. And, but I do want to say, though, that I think that the question that was brought up about the sidewalk probably applies here, that if you could do away with the sidewalk, or if you wanted to do away with the sidewalk, you could do away with the sidewalk here as you could in the perpendicular one, five feet saves five feet. However, think about parallel. If you got parallel, you know, you got to get out of your car, right? You can't get out of the car onto the mud. You have to have parallel in that situ, or sidewalk in that situation, so just keep that in the back of your mind. Here, this is more like the perpendicular in the sense of sidewalk option. The other thing that I think is important to point out is, Will, I think that in this particular, when comparing this to the perpendicular, you're actually not jutting into the park as deeply because of the one-way versus the two-way road.
Yeah, right here, you're probably, I would say there's an eight to 10-foot difference in how far into the park at this end. At this end, it's not quite as, the differential isn't quite as much. I've actually put a couple of dimensions on there. That's 24 foot eight from the existing property line. So it, and the reason for that is because of this handicap parking space here. You know, we had to have 24 feet from the back of that handicap parking space to the backside of these parking spaces. So that just pushes those into the park a little more at that location. And as we taper up further on Lime Rock, and I assumed in all those one-way discussions that the people on Lime Rock and Hughes would want that upper portion to stay two-way, that it would only be this bottom portion that would be one-way. But one-ways are hard to get people to follow the right traffic pattern, too.
We're definitely going to ask you guys to weigh in, those people who live in that area, to weigh in on the one-way, two-way. Doc, do you?
Question again for Will. From a grade standpoint, in opening and closing car doors, does this work okay?
Yeah, I've, I actually labeled what the slope of the road is. It's 8.6% right here. It's about 8.3% here. That's starting to get, if you were parked straight up and down that slope, that's about where doors start to want to close back on you. So the more, the 90-degree, we're able to turn, twist that a little bit and just make the cross-slope a little better. It's, you know, none of it's great. It's, we're parking up and down a hill, so, but...
But it's workable.
It's workable.
Yeah, okay.
The best is at the 90. It gets a little steeper at the 60, and then at parallel, it's, it's as steep as the road.
All right. Hands, questions?
This is probably going to muddy the water a little bit, but have you considered back-in parking? In other words, change the one-way going down. It's much safer. There have been numerous studies. If somebody backs in, and all, all vehicles now have to have backup cameras so they can see where they're going. Also, when they open the doors, you're forced to that sidewalk, which means the kids aren't going to just immediately run right out in the street. And having had an ADHD kid, that's what they like to do.
Bill, thank you. Thank you. You know what? You just gave us one more point of unity. Everybody hates backing up. Sorry.
I was going to say, have you tried that in Thomaston? DOT just did it.
My name is Katie, and, can you hear me?
Yeah, here, here.
I'm a, we're a family to Rockport, I'm a mother of four young children. And we're here tonight because there was a lot of concern in our family about the loss of green space, and specifically trees being cut down. And so Clementine, our eight-year-old, had really wanted to come here and let people know that that was a concern of hers. So this new proposal, library in the park, I thought looked really promising, nourishing to families and everybody. So I just wanted to, to mention...
Which one is that, Deborah?
The library in the park that was submitted.
We don't have that alternative. I don't know why we're talking about parking on the street. We're going to do it somewhere else. Okay. We're talking about the angled parking right now, right?
I wanted to address the question of the five-foot sidewalk from a safety issue. I think, you know, in Staples, I, I notice in those big parking lots, I would rather walk in front of vehicles, so I'm fairly sure that, or there's a better chance that the driver will see me, rather than behind a bunch of parked vehicles where they might start backing out without seeing me. So, you know, depending on all kinds of different conditions, but the sidewalk there provides a level of safety. If you're going back to your car and you end up walking behind a couple of vehicles, it's, it's less, you know, you're going to be trying to look for those drivers and so forth, so they're not backing out when you're just walking behind them. So that's...
Lime Rock, do people want, people support one-way on Lime Rock?
No.
I mean, those who live on Hughes and Lime Rock?
No.
Can, can you raise your hand if you live on Lime Rock or Hughes? All right, okay, and...
We've got two more, two more families.
Okay. And, and just raise your hand if you don't, if you live on Lime Rock or Hughes and you don't support one-way. Don't support one-way.
I'm guessing on which way?
Okay, okay, okay. Good point, okay. All right, I just wanted to get a bit of a video overall.
Either way, either one way is bad.
I would love to, you know, if this really is coming up as a consideration, I'd love to have more time as a community to talk about it and not just sort of vote right now, because there is a lot to consider. One idea that's possible is that, so if you see here, thank you, the library's down here, and the proposed parking sites are right here. You can see I've put fewer in because I don't think we need as many. And I'm not saying that we are all unified as a Lime Rock community at all, but this is just a thought, that if it was two ways up here, yeah?
Sorry, can you come up here and point, and point to this, sort of on, can you try to point with your finger on one of the...
Yeah, sure. So, you want to, can you put the perpendicular back up? Because I think that makes a little more sense in this setting. Okay, so...
Make it bigger?
Yep.
Can you make it bigger, though? Nice.
In this very basic sketch, it would be two-way coming up and going down, only having, you know, reducing this, there just doesn't need to be this many spaces, I promise you all. And then from here on, Lime Rock would just be a one-way to here. And there would be an indication, maybe it's, you know, dots along the road or a sign or something, so that...
Which way, Jen?
We can't see what you're doing.
So...
Now they can't see.
It would be two-way. You could go up here, and you could go down, all the way up to here.
Yeah.
So you could come up here, park, pull out, and then come down.
Yeah.
And then up here, it becomes a one-way street just heading down.
Heading south, okay.
Heading south.
So that's just a...
So, so that everybody on Lime Rock and Hughes has to come to the intersection of Union and Lime Rock? Right.
Well, people, no. I mean, people who live up on where the, where the road goes...
On Hughes?
On Hughes, you can come in there and go up to Hughes, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't come down through Lime Rock to exit here.
You'd have to.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. You could, you could go all the way through and exit here, but people coming up this way to use the library would then come back down this way.
So how do you enforce that?
Well, I think people would get to know the pattern, and you could put a dotted line or signs. Again... Again, I don't speak for everybody on Lime Rock. I feel like this is just one idea.
Will, if I... Could I just ask a question?
Yes, Mark.
One thing, Will, that we had talked about that, that people might not be terribly aware of is that the, the distance that's required for parallel parking when you include the proper width of parking spaces in your sidewalks and to have a reasonable two-way travel is probably in the neighborhood of 40 feet.
You said parallel.
Yeah, parallel. So you, and the difference between the parallel and the perpendicular is a matter of what, eight feet more roughly? So, you know, where it's a matter of whether we have seven or eight spots, parallel parking, or 14 or fewer perpendicular. And the difference is eight feet that you would have to encroach. You're gonna have to encroach some into the park regardless, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a matter of eight-feet difference between one and the other.
If there's parking on Lime Rock Street, then there's gonna have to be some encroachment because there's not, currently Lime Rock just hasn't been wide enough for parking.
Okay, so, so you violated the rule and you took us to parallel.
Sorry. Let me get rid of it?
I'm just kidding. Were there comments that anybody wanted to make on diagonal before we go on to parallel? Pat? Okay, take us back to diagonal, please.
Yep.
He's getting a workout.
I know. It's good for him.
Of all of us here, he probably is the one that doesn't need it most.
I know it.
Pat Messler, this is more a question for probably Will. I was under the impression that if your road was two ways and then turned to one-way, that you had to have provision where people who weren't familiar and were all of a sudden faced with, oops, that's one-way, they have to have kind of a roundish area where they can turn to go back out. Is that not necessary in this case?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if you're gonna create a spot where if you're going the wrong way, you've gotta turn around, then, then we really should, should have a spot for them to turn around.
It would be very easy for someone who doesn't live in that neighborhood to find themselves going, oh, all of a sudden they have to turn around.
Right. Otherwise, there's gonna be a lot of people in, in driveways turning around.
Right. That, that already happens.
Oh, I'm sure it does.
Every day.
Well, the other...
Right, but we don't wanna encourage it, right?
Anybody else before we go to parallel?
But the other point on that one-way would be that if folks were driving up there and there was, all the parking spots were full, then they would have to back down to get out.
Right, or if we were, if you, if, if you were to say that that's what you wanted, then I would push for a designated area for just that purpose, for people to not park but to be open to turn around, which means you're gonna have a, a big parking space that's...
It's not a parking space.
Not really a parking space, but it's just for turnaround. It's not a very efficient use.
Okay, so, let's go to parallel.
Parallel.
Okay, so on the pretty pictures, we, I think we had more parallel spaces at one point in, you know, the Reed versions or whatever. But Will has, has done this one, which is reality, which is, what is it, five or six?
It's five spaces. They're each 22 feet long and eight feet wide.
And again, the sidewalk, you have to have the sidewalk in this scenario, obviously, to be able to get out onto that instead of the grass. And, and Will, unless you already did that with Mark, because I zoned out for a minute, would you explain why this would really need to be one-way as well?
Well, the, the road doesn't need to be one-way, but to access those parking spaces, you actually have to be traveling south down Lime Rock Street. So if you, if you come in off of Union and drop somebody off and then wanna park, you've either gotta go up, turn around in, in somebody's driveway and come back, or you go around, somehow you turn around. But you can't, you can't be going north on Lime, on Lime Rock and parking those spaces. So again, that means everybody has to go on Hughes and Lime Rock.
One of, one of the things that was talked about probably 10 or 15 years ago with Steve Beveridge and Bruce Woodard, the former Public Works, and Fire Chief and I, was the fact of one-way. And it was brought up by a former board member that lived in you guys' neck of the woods. And it was discouraged back then to have it be one-way for similar reasons.
Okay, is that good enough? Okay, I'd just like to point out that doing it this way takes us right back to the old plan where there was not enough parking, and those of us who just wanted to drop off a book spent time running around and around and around looking for a place to park.
I would challenge anybody, if they think that this is gonna be efficient, to go out and look at how the parking is right now on Central Street. As we were driving up to here, in spaces where you would think you could get six or seven cars, you might have four. People pull in, don't realize how close or far they are from the car ahead of them, and instead of being two feet, they are five or six feet. And then you've got the same thing echoing right on down the hill. Likewise, in this case, 100% of vehicle occupants on the driver's side are gonna have to get out into traffic.
Yes, he just addressed the issue of getting out on parking, and I'm thinking of moms with two kids, two infant seats in their cars, opening that door onto a narrow street, which I've seen happen on Union Street and happened badly. My other question is, having received from the police chief before, Mr. Kelly, a parking ticket for parking on the sidewalk, myself and four other cars, it wasn't marked, but will there then be a sidewalk on that part of there? Or will there just be a curb?
No, you have to have a sidewalk on that one. For that, I mean, you have to have a sidewalk if you did parallel.
Yeah, we are showing a sidewalk, which would have a curb also.
You don't have anyone on Central Street.
Right.
As my husband mentioned a few minutes ago, we've lived on...
Can't hear.
Lived on, out, better?
Yes.
We've lived on Lime Rock Street for 19 years. And during that time, we've observed the traffic and the parking on Lime Rock Street. And it was an average of three to five cars, one of which was most of the time, one of the staff members, were parked there at any one time, any one day. So we're concerned about the fact that we don't need a lot of parking there. Times have changed. People now have laptops and iPads and Kindles, and they're not using the library like they used to. So to us, that means less cars because of the change in times. So, you know, and we have no problem with parallel parking. It has worked for us, and I'm just concerned about the other types of parking. I always thought that the angled parking takes less turning into the street than perpendicular parking. So that's one comment I wanted to make.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good comment. Okay, again, I'm gonna ask you guys not to get into numbers of parking and how much we need, because we're never gonna agree on it, and that's gonna have to be a decision that is gonna be made by a body.
My name's Bob Baldwin, and I just have a question, probably to Will. Why is it that, I know it might be slightly awkward, but why is it if you're coming up Lime Rock, you couldn't parallel park on that left side?
Why, well, because it's, it's intended to be two-way traffic, so you'd be, you'd be pulling into oncoming cars in order to parallel park on that side of the, that side of the road.
It's not legal to park in that way.
Yeah.
Okay, one more, and then we're gonna move on to the fourth.
I'm, I'm a little confused. There was a letter that circulated with 50 people signing it. I believe a number of them live on Lime Rock and Hughes Street, which, if I recall correctly, that letter was offered a one-way solution, which people signed on to. But now I'm hearing that many of those same residents are opposed to a one-way solution. So am I correct in saying that, well, I'm confused?
Okay, so, the, now we're gonna move on to the fourth alternative, which you have, don't you have the Reed version of that?
Oh.
You have it, Rick.
Yeah, right, the Reed final...
Right here?
No, further up, there you go, right there.
Right there.
Yeah, I think that'll open it up. Yep. If you go, no...
On the left-hand side.
Oh, no, that, no.
That's not it.
But you gotta...
Reed plan, no, go, make that small.
That perpendicular again.
Yep, get rid of that. It's the, see the second thing over there, right there? Nope, next, go back.
Right there? Nope. Oh, that one.
Very polished.
Okay, blow that up.
There's two here, there's two plans here. There's this one, and then there's this one.
Can you make, can, can you make that a little bit bigger? To focus on the...
That's beyond my capabilities.
Focus on where the car, yeah, okay, that's where, okay. Okay, so at one point, this was a...
This was one of the original, this, this was one of the original Reed options that was discussed back in March, I think, of 2016. And we went out and did a site walk with the Ad-Hoc Library Planning Committee, and I think some of the neighbors were there as well. And pretty much everybody hated this plan. This, this one and the, the other one, that's the next one up. If you scroll, you use the scroll bar and go up.
Why did they hate it?
Excuse me, let me take, ask the questions, okay?
I don't want residents to hate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There was a, there, this one also, this created a scenario where this was a road that could come in, and then the cars could come in, drop off, and then go and park up in this northerly, what we're calling the northern part of the park. And it was angled in parking, and then they could go out to Union Street. And it kept the intersection the same way. And again, pretty much everybody hated that plan because the, the parking is so far removed from the, one of the reasons is the parking is so far removed from the library itself. And also, the neighbors did not, as I said in my initial, initial statement, the neighbors and the park committee did not like the incursion into the park. And the, the neighbors didn't want the cars up by their houses either.
And I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. When Rick says everybody hated it, that was the steer, Ad-Hoc Library Committee. It was not the select board, it was not a vote, it wasn't, you know, so let's just make, make sure we know what we're talking about there. Are we clear on it? The other thing is that, that at that time, there hadn't been any proposal, I think, for cutting in on Union or doing the Russell. I mean, that was, so when you talk about the parking's too far away, I just wanna be fair here. When you're talking about parking being too far away, certainly that parking's a little bit further, but then some people have shown in town where that parking is no further than when you do the 14 perpendicular. I don't wanna get into all that, but all I'm saying is, in fairness, the Union and the Russell cutouts were not there.
Right, and this is from Dick Reed's original schematic design that he did in his presentation when there was the competition for the, with the six architects. So he was trying to come up with some other, some other method of dealing with the parking.
Right.
And then in May of that year, I think it was, I'm looking to Anne, I think in May, it went back, when the Ad-Hoc Library Planning Committee, who was charged with the responsibility of moving something forward, that was their job that the select board gave them, went to Dick Reed and said, "We need to see some alternatives to this plan." And that's where you saw all of those other alternatives that started popping up, because Dick Reed did a lot of work, and Will was part of that as well, I believe. Of those, those, again, schematic designs, they, they were just pencils and paper on, you know, on a flat piece of paper.
Pretty pictures, okay. So, so this particular picture, pretty picture, shows a two-way road and doing away with the Lime Rock. Some people have proposed that you could simply cut this off and make this a park, you know, a parking lot, not make this a road. And, you know, we, we don't have to get into the discussions of what happens here, but that this could be parking lot with ability, sorry, this could be parking lot with ability to turn around. So let's just talk about that. Now, Will, I think that you had said to me that it still requires an incursion into the park of 24 feet. And does that, does that 24 feet...
You're talking this right here?
Yeah, and, and, and just imagine if it's, I don't care if it's perpendicular or diagonal at this point, no, this. I thought that you had told me that this would require, this, guys, would require 24 feet.
Well, if it's, if it's 60-degree, then it doesn't require the 24. If it's 90-degree, it would. So the overall width would be less for 60-degree parking. It's less efficient as far as the number of spaces in that direction. But, so it's, it's somewhere between probably, let's see, 24 and 18. So you're talking about 40, somewhere between 42 probably and 38 feet, whether it was 90-degree or angled, is the total width of that. And I'm assuming, too, that there's a, if it's angled, you could do one-way, right?
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about not, yeah, you're talking about, well, my question goes to making that a parking lot, not making it a road. So there's no one-way or two-way, thanks. It's just a parking lot.
Oh, dead-ending it on one, one end or the other?
Yeah, that was my question.
Couldn't do the angle, then, could you?
No, you'd have to...
Have to be parallel or perpendicular.
It would have to be perpendicular if you were, if you're doing that, because you've gotta be able to go back out the same way you came in.
Right, right.
Just like the picture here in this park. It seemed like you guys were aware of it.
Oh, we were. I mean, we weren't aware of this, we were aware of the work Dick Reed put into it, because he's the architect we paid to do that.
Also, this is something, I'm, I'm sorry, I came into this, I just, I don't know the history.
So, okay, so, so imagine that, didn't we have one a minute ago that was perpendicular instead of diagonal? Oh, no, I guess it was just diagonal going the other way.
I think there's one on there, though, that had, well, no, I guess that's...
No.
So you're saying that that is a, okay, so, I'm sorry, could you tell me, I know you're just hypothesizing on these numbers, but could you tell me the numbers that you just mentioned?
Well, you could from...
If it was a parking lot, not a road?
It really, it doesn't matter, the width of that space that you have to travel in to get in and out and to turn in and out of the, of the spaces
Right.
is, is more based on the width that you need to get in and out of the space than it is to drive in and out.
And so is that the same as like a single-lane road or a double-lane road? Or, that's what I'm trying to get to.
If it's 90-degree, it's gonna, in both cases, it's pretty close to a two-way road.
Okay, okay.
It's less if it's angled, but then you can't have the dead end.
Gotcha.
Real close to him.
My name's Mary Stevens, I live on Hughes Street. And this plan here, it looks about like something that I could live with, because if you made the parking just perpendicular, straight in, then people wouldn't be less likely to use the streets, Lime Rock and Hughes. They're more likely to, you'd keep the whole library business right there in the corner. So they come off of, of Union, they drive into that parking lot. If it were straight in, if it were straight in, then people could back out and go back out Union. It's also the quickest, more efficient way to access the library than coming down our streets, because you keep saying they're two-way, but I've yet to see two people be able to pass each other on Lime Rock or Hughes. They're really just single-lane, small roads. So, yeah, I, this one, it looks pretty good to me compared to the others.
Probably Tom, it's no surprise, because I am the person who lives in the house right adjacent. I am the one who would have my entire south border, both on that and the library and the park plan, my entire south border, right up to my property line would become asphalt. Right now, the trees that are there are half mine and half the town's, and I've been told by two landscapers that if those are asphalted over the roots, that I will lose them. So, that is my shade and cooling in the summer. So, the entire traffic area, all of it transfers to just me. And as a R.E.S. supporter, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that. As a property owner, I'm concerned about the decrease of my property value, that where that hand is right now is my bedroom window. So, everything, car that comes and goes in and out of there, or every event at the Opera House is going to go under my bedroom window. That just feels like an enormous burden, that, and I don't have a neighborhood to vote in my favor, it's just me, and...
We, we understand.
I'm a little bit horrified by this option.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and we, we, we understand, and, and it is a, it is a big problem, imposition, thank you for somebody giving me the right word, for you. And of course, there are neighbors that feel the same way about some of the other plans on the other side of the park. So, all of those concerns are valid concerns that we understand. Okay?
The difference is, the difference is, this is my entire boundary. It's the entire border, not just a piece of it. And so, it literally would turn my house into, like, I have Union Street, which I'm right up on, and then I have two-way traffic and a parking lot, that, that I don't think there's any other plan that puts that level of encumbrance on any one person.
I, I don't want to get into that, I'm not sure that, that other people would agree with that, if they look out the front door at a parking lot. So, I, you know, I, we just, it's not useful to get into that discussion. We acknowledge your concern, we acknowledge concerns of other neighbors. I think there's a, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, I, I think this is one of the best options I've seen, for a lot of the reasons people have stated. In addition, the, the four-way intersection becomes a three-way intersection, and everything, sorry, my son is at lacrosse practice, so I'm gonna have to go after this. But, and I understand my neighbor's concern with it, you know, impacting her severely, but probably there can be some tasteful plantings done that could replace those trees at that edge of the parking lot. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this seems like one of the best options, this or something similar to the priestly design of, you know, the library and the park. Plus, the library's part of the whole park, it becomes part of the whole park. It's not this separation of, of a street you have to cross between the park and the library. Just makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
What do you think, Paul? I think they're up here.
Yeah, I, in looking at that, I can see a lot of hot dogs, I can see a really nice party, barbecue.
So, so, so this is, this is the Youngs, and we have their permission to use these pictures. And...
I know, it looks kinda funny, maybe this is where we would all rather be, in our shorts, out, okay. So, but, and then, this is their backyard, of course, that, that, that neighbors onto the library. Now, would you show us the other one, Rick?
Yep.
Whoa, whoa, we're still parting, hang on. Oh, oh, no.
You know, they look awful long alike, Rick.
Yeah, yeah. Is that the, did you already, did you get...
Oh, is it, is it on the same, is it down here or something?
Oh, maybe it's down below. Got it?
No.
All right, well, another technological glitch. But anyway, the point is, if you can imagine, all of those trees now are completely gone, every single one of them. And all they can see is the back of the buildings they never saw before. So, my point is only that we can't belittle, you know, the effect that this has on neighbors, it's huge. I mean, my heart sank when I saw these two pictures, you know, and it's, it's huge, it's huge, huge, that's huge, huge for the other neighbors. So, it's something that we all need to be very aware of, and I'm not speaking with my phone. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, back to you.
So, the parking lot as it is now serves in a number of ways that have nothing to do with the library. I can see myself coming by graphems, parking there, walking up, getting my lobster roll, coming down, sitting in the amphitheater and really enjoying that part of the park. I can also see parking there and walking down to the library to use the library. And I can see parking there when the amphitheater is in use, because I'm gonna be listening to music all, all evening, 'cause you have an amphitheater there that I don't believe is there now, at least I'm not aware of that kind of a structure. So, this parking has a little bit to do with your library, but a whole lot to do with my being a tourist and walking around, and I'm gonna go to the Oyster Restaurant or Nine and June, and I'm gonna park here, because everybody else is parked on Central Street. I'm gonna park there for the Opera House, here, when there's a concert, and like I said, I'm gonna walk up the street, I'm gonna get something to eat, I'm gonna enjoy the park, I'm going there for an amphitheater with, you know, and, and, oh, and there's a library. This, the library is kind of an afterthought. And so, the increase in cars, pedestrians, activity is huge, and I think that adds an even greater burden at all times of the day to the abutters. So, I just wanna point that out. This is great fun for me as the tourist.
I remember. I have a question for our former police chief, and I don't think our fire chief is here, concerning, I, I think one of the reasons this idea was rejected the first couple of times it was presented, was the issue of getting emergency vehicles in there, the ambulance, the fire trucks, and so on. And I'd like to hear about that. And then, too, the other issue is, if that is a street going through there, would it need to meet the minimum standards required by the town in order to pave it, or plow it and so on?
Yeah, we're not, okay, to your first question, Helen, we did check with Jason, and Jason did not have a problem with that. So, from a fire department standpoint, that's, that's a, that's not a concern.
My question is, with this particular plan, going back to the advocacy which has been fought for, for years and years and years, for accessibility for everyone, those of us like myself, I'm being selfish now, in terms of my own ability to get to the library, to get anyplace where I have to park. I bum rides even to come here to these meetings because of that accessibility. I also see it as an accessibility issue for young moms with one or two or more toddlers. And I know it doesn't seem like, to those of you who are truly able-bodied, that that's a problem, but trust me, walk around in someone else's shoe, shoes, get a wheelchair out of a parking spot there, and get down to the library. I, I think that, that, as always, is my biggest point, is advocacy for people who aren't as fortunate as some.
Yeah, very, very valid concerns and important points, Stevie. I think the other thing that, to keep in mind, 'cause again, we're looking at pretty pictures, is that theoretically, you would still have, in this plan, just arguably, you would still have the five on Union, the three on Russell, and you may have the two, you know, the two drop-offs and the handicap there too. It's not, you know, all we're really looking at, unfortunately, on this one, is just where the proposed parking is there. But, in any event, that's, just keep that in mind.
Gotta use this. Well, gotta use this.
Yes, I was gonna speak to this plan, but I also had some materials that I had handed out. Nobody else, nobody else in the streaming audience will hear you.
Okay, I came in with some graphic materials, this might be an appropriate time to distribute them, I saved a few copies for the slide board. Can you tell me, Deborah, is this an appropriate time?
Go ahead and make your comment, John.
Well, some of you in the audience have, have some drawings that I passed out earlier. These aren't part of the formal presentation, but they're relevant to the topic at hand. Anybody else interested? Yes, no? So, first off, I wanna say, one thing that's, one thing that's really clear to me is that a tremendous amount of work has gone to these site plans over the years, and, and I appreciate all of that. I also wanted to speak to the comment that Rick made, in, in closing his summary of how we got to this point, Rick used the word "compromise" to describe the current plan that's being considered, which is not the one on display. And I'd like to point out that I, I think there are solutions that, that don't involve compromise, or compromise of such a negligible degree that I think it would satisfy so many criteria. To the plan that's up right now, we just heard a comment that the parking was perceived as being inaccessible. I do wanna point out something that is, and is a fact, it's not an opinion, the parking, as shown in that diagram, is within one foot of the first floor elevation of the building. That's apparent on the grading plan, the base plan that Gartley and Dorsey has produced. The height difference from Lime Rock Street at the top of that diagram, all the way down to the intersection, depending on where you measure, as Will pointed out, it's sloping, it depends where you measure to, it's in the order of 11 to 12 feet of drop. So, you have quite an incline going up Lime Rock Street currently. From the parking area that's indicated there, to the first floor of the library where it's planned to go, is a one-foot height difference. Most of us who shop at Hanford's go up more of a climb getting from our cars to the front door. The other thing I wanted to point out, and it's, it's not this diagram, it's the one that you might have in your hands here, I measured the distance from the parking spaces in the currently proposed plan, and is it possible that we can go to that plan, because I'll be speaking to it? Do you want me to go to the...
Sure.
So, if you look at that plan and you compare it to the one that is in the handout called "Library in the Park," these look a lot closer, don't they? I've measured the distance from these spaces, individual spaces, and averaged the walking distance. I've measured the distance from the farthest space and the closest space, and that is, is summarized on the second sheet. So, this plan has its closest parking space at 84 feet from the library front door, and the farthest at 204 feet. The average walking distance works out to 144 feet, okay? You just do that with a measure. The plan that you see in these handouts, the closest parking space is 108 feet, the farthest is 149, the average walking distance is 134 feet, or 10 feet shorter. So, the perception that putting parking on the upper edge of the lot somehow makes those spaces farther away, doesn't match up with the facts. And I think it's important to understand that, because I've heard from more than one person, there was concern that the parking was too far away. That's just, that's just a measurement, that's not my opinion. This plan, and I'll use Rich Anderson's measurement for this, I had one that was quite similar, takes away about 40% of the current green space. If you look at the plan and you see the heavy dash-dot line that runs along the edge, lower edge of the parking area, along Lime Rock Street, that's the boundary line. Obviously, parking goes into the park. What's not apparent is that the green space actually extends out within that right-of-way by a couple of feet or a few feet in areas. So, the total loss of green space is greater than the area that you see that's currently indicated in white, which shows the paving. So, approximately 40% of the green space of the park is lost. So, I wanted to point out, again, on the handout, I titled it "Library in the Park," there are 14 parking spaces that are designated. There's actually an increase in the green space. So, when I measured this initially, I wanted to figure out how much space I had lost when I measured the parking that I had added versus the pavement that I had removed, and I was surprised to find there was actually a net gain in green space. So, again, the one you have in your hand, 14 parking spaces, they're perpendicular spaces, they're on the same level as the library, they're shorter distance, walking distance to the library, and the park is not compromised. And I, I've heard from the Parks Commission that they oppose encroachments in the park. Well, the, the plan you see in the library and the park is definitely an encroachment upon the current space in the park, but really what it represents is a reorganization of the entire parcel in a way that adds, albeit a small amount, but it adds to the green space, it does not compromise it. Will, could you put your cursor on the trees that are currently in the park, starting right there? There's one that...
That's a stump, that one's gone.
That's a stump, that's already gone. Two, that one is gone, down to the next one. Keep going, I think.
Right there.
There, that one's gone. That one's gone. The next one, hold on, I think you missed one that's saved. Isn't there one that's saved, Will? Somewhere right in there, I think there's one that's in the green space.
Well, there's a couple around the monument.
Yep, and then keep going up, Union, and that one's gone, and keep going, and that one's gone, and keep going, and gone, and gone. So, I don't think you can call it a park if it doesn't have trees, I think it could become Memorial Field. In the plan on the handout, all the, all the current trees are saved, many of those are large, mature trees. I feel like they're important to the history of our town, and they honor those who served our town.
Okay.
So, as does the entire park. So, again, it's about parking, can we achieve parking without destroying the park? Can we achieve parking without taking down the trees? We can. Another, another aspect...
John, we're gonna move on now. But, thank, thank you for your comments, and the board has a copy of, of what you've handed out. So...
Am I the only person who's been cut off?
No, John, John, no, I, I cut everybody off, are you kidding?
That's right.
And in fact, Bill's gonna see me cut him off right now too, because what we're gonna do is, we're gonna move to the document, because I gotta keep an eye on the time here, unless you guys wanna sleep here. We're gonna move to the document, Will, that you have, where you've done the comparison and the green space and so forth, there you go.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just run through it real quick?
Yes, would you please? Yep.
All right, hold on a second, sorry. All right, so what, what I did when I was asked about some of the numbers and the percentages in park space, and 90-degree parallel and, and that type of thing, I just calculated the area between Lime Rock and Union that is within the property lines. As John pointed out, there's some places where there's a strip outside the property line that's in the right-of-way. I did not count that, 'cause, just because it was easy to do a, a relative comparison. And so, the current plan of 14 spaces with 90 degrees, there's 18,468.19 square feet of green space that's within the property lines on Memorial Park. With the 14 spaces, it's 11,996, and you lose 6,007, I mean, 6,47183 for a 35% loss. And then what I did is just subtract one space, so I go from 14 to 13 to 12 to 11 to 10 to 9 to 8, so that you could see, if you eliminate spaces, what the changes are. Then I also did the same thing for angled parking, the max we could get there is 10 spaces. I thought it was very interesting that I ended up with almost identical numbers for 10 angled parking spaces. 10 angled parking spaces that we did for 90. And like I said a few minutes ago, I was actually very surprised and went back and really double-checked that to try to figure that out, because I was not expecting that. But you can see in those comparisons that they're very, very similar. And then the last one I did was that parallel parking with five spaces. And that ended up being a 26.86 percent loss, or just under 5,000 square feet. And that is closest to the six spaces in both cases, I think. Actually, seven spaces of the 90-degree.
So ...
I just thought it was interesting.
Yeah.
I was glad that I was asked to do it, because there's been a lot of talk about it.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
I just wonder, calculation of green space, does that include hardscapes in the park?
So, when I subtracted this column here, which is what we were losing for green space, I subtracted everything that wasn't vegetated. So, if it wasn't going to be grass or trees, so sidewalks, all the hardscape, all the asphalt and concrete sidewalks and paving, were subtracted out. So, it was as conservative as you could be, or ...
So, one of the things that I think is obviously important to the calculations to these numbers here is the depth into which you are encroaching, I need a neutral word, the depth into which you are going into the park on the different plans. So, my numbers, based on your numbers, I have my little cheat sheet here on your sheet. And so, when you're talking about the perpendicular parking, depending on where, in, you know, the bottom or the top of the perpendicular parking, the depth into the park is 22 to 33 feet. You know, I ignored the inches. But if you take off five feet of sidewalk, because we talked about that today, that reduces it to 17 to 28 feet. Then, when you go to the angled parking, the depth into the park is 17 to 29 feet. So, while those numbers look very similar, the depth into the park, as you've talked about, is less. If you don't have a sidewalk, it comes down to 12 to 24 feet.
Wait a minute, if it's an angled parking, you need to have a sidewalk, right?
Well, we were talking ...
Oh, no, you're right. We don't, yeah, yeah. Parallel, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. But parallel parking?
Right.
You do need to have a sidewalk, as we were talking about. And the depth there is 10 feet to 22.9 there, and it's almost 20 feet. So, really, you know, I think that those are interesting numbers for the board or decision-maker to keep in mind when we're ...
Can we get a hard copy of that at some point?
Of this, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's ...
Okay.
I brought some copies for the board.
Are there comments on this slide here?
I can't see very well, but is the parallel parking, does that say five spaces?
Yes.
I, observing all these 19 years, that there were a lot more than five cars being able to park there. And especially on opera night, opera house openings and so forth. So, I think that you could probably get more than five spaces there, less intrusion into the park. And the fact that all the other spaces that we've been talking about tonight are going to be empty a good portion of the week, on weekends, in the evenings, in the early mornings, and in some cases, if there's lighting there, those will be on at night. So, that makes a case for parallel parking, which is all along an existing street, which everybody is used to being asphalt.
Okay. Questions on the last slide that we were on, hopefully?
Yeah, I can go back to that.
I just wanted to say again, I think the sidewalk is important to keep in. I think of children, I think of the safety issue, and I think that sidewalk should stay in there for young families coming. And also, last week, someone mentioned that there were a lot of kids in the neighborhood. So, if you've got kids coming down the street, you want them to have a sidewalk to be on. So, I would not switch safety for area of the park.
So, my understanding is that the reason for being here tonight is to come to consensus. And I realize that we're never going to come fully to consensus, I accept that. But what my passion is, is to keep green space. And I just would ask the Select Board to think seriously about the new proposal that was given tonight, because I do think that it gives real new parking spaces that are accessible to the library and increases the green space. So, to me, it seems like a win-win. And I realize, for those of you who've been working on this for a very long time and have looked at all the other proposals, this may seem, you know, one you haven't really wrapped your head around, but as someone who hasn't looked at all of them, this has a very nice, fresh appeal. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question about the green space. How much green space does Simonden Corner, or West Rockport, or Rockville, or Glen Cove have that is public green space like this, versus the six other parks that we are graced with here in the village, not counting Memorial Park? Like the one right next door to here, or the one over next to Peter Ralston's, or the Harbor Park, or Kramer Park, yes, that's kind of underused, or Walker Park, or RES?
Okay. Keeping a positive note, do you have any more?
Hi, thank you. I just want the Select Board to keep in mind that I think that it's important, when you are building a new building, especially where people will come, and you want them to come, that you have more assigned parking than dropping it down. To me, it seems counterproductive. And the other thing I want you to just keep in mind, as you're thinking about this going forward, is that there are associated costs with looking at new plans, costs, delays, overruns, that kind of thing. I think that's very important, to keep that in mind. You know, I think having a discussion on the plan that has been submitted already to determine, you know, based on, you know, different parking spaces and allowable green space, I think that makes a perfectly great discussion. But that was just my thoughts, thank you.
One thing I wanted to ask, I'm really glad you mentioned it, I'm not sure ...
I'm really glad you mentioned it, Ann. I'm not sure if this is what you meant, but it prompted a thought of mine. I know that the town typically has not been real favorable toward designating parking spots for a particular use, but ...
Definitely would.
I mean, I think this is one instance where the town might want to consider, you know, you're thinking about at least those Union Street, I mean, aside from what we do with respect to the rest of the parking, but at least, you know, throw out there, the Union Street and the Russell Street, parking spaces be designated for library use, you know, during the day, at least. Do you think that that would help? I'm not asking you to give up on any other parking, I'm just asking you if doing that kind of designation you think would help.
Well, I guess I'd have to see how, I think it would help, but I think it also is important that maybe one or two spaces, or even three or four spaces be designated on Lime Rock. I mean, you know, as designated parking that could be used at other times, obviously. But yes, you know, even if it was, you know, 15-minute drop-off or something, absolutely.
Deb, I might, that, the fact that they would potentially, particularly the 14 spaces on Lime Rock Street, they were always considered to be designated parking spaces during the hours that the library was open. So, the library's open, you know, nine to five, and Wednesday night till eight, correct?
Nine to five, 11 to eight.
Nine to five, 11 to eight. So, during the hour, they were always planned to be, those were going to be signed as designated for library patrons during those hours. And then off of those hours, then they'd be open for everybody else.
Deb?
Yes, and then Jan.
Quick question to sort of just pick up where Ann left off. And this is a question, sort of, it's a Select Board, I'll drag Will into it a little bit, but it does have to do with costs. I know we sent out what we refer to as the current plan for bid, and we agreed. But we also agreed that we could do a change order, and, you know, if the town wants to do something differently, we can, and we'll have to pick up the cost for that. But sort of two questions. One is for Will, you know, is there any way to project how much time might be involved in doing actual construction drawings, different from the plan that we have? And then assuming the town wants to pick up that extra cost, where would the Select Board put it in our budget?
You also have the additional cost, Charlie, if Charlie can weigh in here. The additional cost of change orders that would, I mean, that would be a pretty significant change order to go ...
Well, we agreed, we would do a change order if we had to. But I'm trying to get an idea of magnitude, sorry, magnitude of ...
A deduct change order from the existing 14 spaces down to something similar to 12 or 10 or 7 is less egregious, and it's something that could be worked with in the budgets we have now. Going to northern parking ...
That's going with the current plan, but decreasing spots.
The current plan, but reducing the number of spots. Going with a new plan, I can't give you an answer on what the change order would be, but I can most certainly say it would be an up-change order, without question, and I don't even know what it is. But moving everything over and investigating that could potentially be greater than the budgets we have now.
Jan?
Will, how long would it take you if they decide on a direction? How long's it going to take you?
Depends on how many meetings. I know. Yeah, I mean, if the direction were changed to something like what was handed out tonight, I don't know, it would probably take two or three weeks of messing with it to, you know, work out the bugs and go through it with everybody.
Hi, I'm Jan Rosenbaum. I live in Rockport, and for more years than I care to remember, I chaired various committees about building the new library. I wanted to say two things. One, how thankful I am to not be on the Select Board one more time. I admire and am not the slightest bit envious of the work that you have to do in a situation like this. And second, I want to say that I want the Select Board, I wish I could get an answer, but I can't, but I want the Select Board to think carefully how you wait the comments of and the needs of and the desires of the few people who live in the neighborhood as opposed to the many people who live in Rockport. Not to say that those people's needs are not serious, and if I lived down that street, I would be right there also. But for all the years that I led committees, the people that I had the most disagreements with about where the library should go were the people who lived on Hulse and on Lime Rock, and they fought very hard to keep the library at one Lime Rock. They were the biggest competitors of people who did not want it to go to RES. And I think from most of my conversations, that many of those people expected a new little cute house, exactly the same size as the old little cute house, and no changes in the library. Well, you have the library now, which you wanted, and you will have to make the best of it that you can. But the safety of the users, the welcoming of the library, the overall usefulness for the future, really do have to weigh more than the needs of a quarter or a half a percent of the population of Rockport.
Okay. You guys, it is now five after nine. Every ...
All of the villages did not vote to keep it in the village, and that's an important difference.
Every, Beth, okay, wait, quit filibustering me, please. Everybody understands what your concerns are, and Jan expressed his view. I know that what John is going to say, and I really appreciate all your comments and working together as we did to at least understand these plans and some alternatives tonight. And with that, I would like to suggest that we, Jen, you guys, you guys, everybody who wants to speak has had an opportunity.
That's not true.
Jen? Okay, okay.
Okay, this is it, that's it. But Mary Bach?
So, I just want to share Mary's letter. "To the people of Rockport, I have recently become aware of a plan that is being discussed to build at least 14 spaces, parking spaces into the Veterans Memorial Park across Lime Rock Street from the Rockport Library. This land was part of Mary Louise Bach's gift to the town, along with a property on which the library would be built. And now, as I remember what I have learned from that gracious and visionary lady, I'm very sure that she thought very carefully about the use of that wide, open space. Clearly, her intent was that the land to be used for the enjoyment and the well-being of the people of Rockport, and that the library should be located there at the head of the main street, flanked, as it is, by the clear, open space of the lovely park with its few green, few trees that grace its lawn. I visit Rockport frequently throughout the year and often see children playing in that park. At other times, I find adults relaxing in the shade of a tree with a good book, or perhaps with a fistful of paintbrushes, working on a watercolor landscape to capture the beauty of the place and the peace it has to offer. I am writing to you now to express my dismay at the thought of tearing into this lovely spot. I am very sure that Mary Louise Bach would be deeply saddened to know that such a plan was even being considered. Such a thought would not be what she had in mind when she dreamed of a way to enrich the beauty of this town and the gentle spirit of the place that is home to so many she was pleased to call her friends. I hope you will find another, more reasonable solution to the need for extra parking places near the center of town, and that you will make your plans accordingly. Rockport has a vibrant magic in its heart. Please think of this as you make your plans to meet the pressure to change. Sincerely, Mary Bach."
Okay, thank you, Jen. All right, thanks, everybody. We're not going to take any more questions. I know you have your hand up, John, but we're going to end this portion of the meeting, or we'll be here all night. But I appreciate, I appreciate you ending this with me with the respect that we started out with. And let's go forth tonight, and the Select Board, if you want to stay, while we continue to discuss. We're moving now into the process of, the Select Board is, of how to proceed in terms of making a decision, whether that's going to be something the Select Board does, whether it's something that goes to vote, all of that. But it's, we're moving into that phase now for the Select Board. You're obviously welcome to stay, but I'm going to close this portion.
Thank you, Deborah.
Folks, we'll take about a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene the Select Board at 9:15. 9:15. So, we'll give everyone a chance, who needs to, to stand up and take a break. I'm gonna ask the select board to gather again. We have some more business we have to attend to. For those in the audience, for those in the audience, you are welcome to stay, but we do have a meeting we have to conduct, so I'm gonna ask the conversations to cease.
Yeah.
I don't even know where it is. I think you stole it.
I guess Jeff left us.
Okay, no, he's right there.
Do we have to sing happy birthday to Jeff?
That's right, that's right, oh my God, I forgot to say that to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene here. I'll look to Bruce to let me know when we're, okay. We're on. If I could ask, if I could ask everybody to stop their conversations, please. The select board does have quite a bit more work to do, and we too would like to get home at a decent hour tonight, although the decent hour may have already passed, but anyway. I want to thank Deborah and Jeff for facilitating the discussion, and thank everybody who came for participating. It was, there were a lot of good comments. As Deborah said at the outset, we don't necessarily all agree, but hearing the comments and respecting the comments, I think is very important, and I think Deborah and Jeff deserve our thanks for doing a good job with that. The next item on our agenda is to talk about the process to make a decision on the parking plan, and to decide if we want to pursue an alternate plan or not. We have the plan that has been sent out to bid, that's the only one that's been fully engineered and drawn, and I think the board has to make a decision about whether we want to pursue an alternate parking plan, if so, which one, and then a process about how are we gonna involve, how are we gonna make the decision? Our town council has told us that if we are making a decision where we're not asking the townspeople to spend more money, that that decision would lie in the purview of the select board to make that decision. I will say that we have had a narrative as we've gone so far that originally there would have been a town vote if the amount was in the municipal budget in June. So those things are all on the table as part of our discussion. So I guess I would open it up to the select board members to make any comments along those lines in terms of process.
It might be helpful, maybe if each of us sort of just gave our thoughts upfront. Wait a minute, I haven't gotten my thoughts organized yet. Well, let me-
Let me start.
No, let me start then, because first of all, I would like to thank all of the residents in town who wrote letters to me and to the select board. I'm sure the other members of the select board got as many letters that I did, and it was people I don't usually hear from, and so it was great that people did get involved and spoke up. Then beyond that, I think in terms of the select board making the decision versus sending it out to the town for a vote, I'll be the first to admit that initially, my inclination was to send it out to the town for a vote. I mean, after all, that's what democracy is about, and it just seemed like the right thing to do. But as this discussion has gone on, I've been very surprised at the number of people who both through their emails and also who have personally told me basically to, you know, buck up, you know, this is why we elected you, you know, you're here to make these decisions. And so I've come around to the thinking that as a select board, we're gonna have to make the decision. This is a divisive issue, and, but again, I think that's why we were elected, and I think the sooner we make it, the better off we are in terms of fundraising and also just sort of getting beyond it for people. So I'm gonna advocate strongly tonight for us to make the decision. I would like us to see us make a decision tonight, to be honest with you. So those are sort of my two cents worth.
Mark, you were ready to go there?
I'm not inclined to put it out to a vote, because the people that you're gonna hear from, perhaps, you're gonna hear things that you don't want to hear, and those that are gonna be mad at you after tonight's decision, the other half's gonna be mad after the June vote, and all we're doing is putting it off. I think that by making a decision tonight is in our best interest as a town and this project's best interest.
I wholeheartedly support the view expressed by Doug and by Mark that we, as a select board, should make the decision. It's advisory if it goes to the vote, and God forbid if we make a decision that went against the vote, and, after the vote. And so, you know, I think that, as you said, Doug, we've gotten a lot of emails from people telling us to be courageous, and I, for one, like being courageous. So anyway, I think it's our responsibility, and I think that's what we should do. The suggestion that we make a decision tonight is not one that I was contemplating, but I do think that's the path that we should take, and we should take it very, very soon.
I'm not in favor of making a decision tonight, because I want some time to process what I've heard. Right, wrong, or indifferent, we heard from some of the stakeholders most impacted, and that's fine, but there's a broader community that I still feel hasn't had their oar in the water on this yet. And I don't know exactly how to get that input. It might be a survey, but it might not. I'm okay with not putting this out to vote. I think everybody needs to remember, there is no money in the town budget as proposed currently for any spending on parking. We had the indication that the library project would fund the parking as originally proposed, so going to a vote on it on, in June, you're not really voting on anything, except it would be an informational vote, as opposed to a vote to either spend money or not spend money, because it's not in the budget. So that's where I am on this one. I think there's gotta be some, I'd like to know how much some of this stuff's gonna cost.
And I get to go last. I have the hardest time, I guess, not going to a town vote, because I promised several people that we would, and that was the narrative all along. I understand the sentiment for trying to get the decision made and get it behind us. It helps move the project forward, it helps with the fundraising, and I fully understand all of that. Some of my, part of this decision, I guess, is what we develop for an alternative plan, if we decide to change. And I'll say right now that I am a proponent of the 14 spaces. I think that was developed over a long period of time and took into account a lot of needs for the site, for the town, and for the library, and for those who don't live right nearby and who can't walk to that, to the library. One of the things that I have said to some of my fellow select board members after, of the past few days, of the past week or so, as we've considered this, has been that one way that I would be willing to move off putting it to a town vote would be if we looked at an alternative pattern, and if anybody, everybody could come to a consensus, and I'm not sure that we did tonight, I'm not sure that we didn't, but if we could come to a consensus of the perpendicular spots and perhaps reducing the number of them a little bit, in my mind, that would allow us to keep that plan going should the new library be built, and then we find that in two or three years, well, let's say for the sake of argument, instead of 14 spaces, we put nine spaces in or something like that, and then we find in a few years that, you know what, those nine spaces just aren't enough. We're having people coming to the library and telling the library director that they can't find a place to park. We would already have the plans ready to do that. We would save some green space, we would honor the neighbors of the park who have had their concerns aired tonight, and legitimately so, and that might be a way for us to move forward quickly. So I would be willing to move off my stance that we have to have a town vote if we look at that sort of an alternative, or if the board decides to stick with the 14 spots, I would be happiest, but I'm willing to move on that, and I hope all of us are willing to move a little bit on how we individually feel about it in order to get this project to move forward.
Because you were open enough to express your inclination, I'm going to also express my inclination. I've listened to all the discussions tonight and the arguments. My inclination is to go with the current plan, except to reduce it by four spots and eliminate the sidewalk.
Does anybody else want to talk about their inclination at this point, or it's-
No, I don't. I really, I really do want to, you know, think about what I've heard tonight, and I'm sure I'm gonna hear from more residents in the meantime, too, and they can certainly weigh in on your inclinations, and, you know, it's a fair, it's a fair alternative. I do think that we should, I mean, I would like to see us put this on the agenda for the first, the next meeting in April.
That'll be a long night, but we can do it. And I want to echo what Doug said about the emails and the letters that we got. I started responding to them initially, and then there were so many of them that I apologized that I was unable to respond to everybody, but I did read them all. And everybody has a legitimate point of view, and I think that was part of the exercise tonight, to recognize that everybody has a legitimate point of view, and I think we have to take account of that. We have to take account of those who are butters to that Memorial Park property, that library lot that we call Memorial Park right now, those who have butted that, they're important. We also have to take account of the folks who live in other parts of town and who need to use a car to get to the library. We also have to recognize that we're building a new library. We're building a library that's gonna have the ability to provide more services than we did in the past, and we're certainly hopeful that that means that more people are gonna come and use it. That was, that's the whole point of doing it. So I think, to a certain extent, while the historical parking information, whether anecdotal or carefully considered, is worth consideration, I think we have to admit the possibility that the usage is likely going to increase. We don't know how much, but I think it's likely to increase. Somebody made the comment this evening about Kindles and stuff like that, and I know Ben probably looked out there and said, "We have Kindles," and we loaned books on Kindles, so just because you look at your book on a Kindle doesn't mean you might not use the library, you might use it for something else, too.
So Will, if you would, remind me again, if you're doing parallel parking from, and you don't have to go to that, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm trying to envision, because I sort of measured it off in my head. Are you six or seven spaces coming down from Rich Anderson's down the hill?
Five.
Only five.
Five, okay.
One thing to consider with that also is, the way that the road will be rebuilt, you won't be able to park illegally. You know, you won't be able to drive up on the sidewalk the way we do now. You won't, you know, because it's all gonna be curbed.
So I guess where I was going with that is, you're, you know, with lowering the total to 10, you're still netting five to the good. We've increased the safety of three or four out on Union Street and the safety of those on Russell Avenue by making the road wider. So we're trying to make a better project as a whole, and I think if those four were available in the future to expand on, then that might be, you know, I'd be willing to go ahead with a little less with the perpendicular.
Could I ask one question?
Yep, absolutely.
Will, when you're looking at the perpendicular spaces, can you tell us where the Flocks house is, the second house? Maybe you could put that up there, because I don't really see the, you know, on what we have, we don't really have the outline, or I don't see that, not perceiving the outline of the houses there, so.
Well, he's getting that. I'll just say, I went out to the state areas and I paced off four spots.
Oh, you did?
And it actually opens up Don Flock's front yard. I don't want to get into addressing individual property owners.
Yeah.
But it definitely improved Don's view.
This is, this is the Flocks right here.
Okay.
And, you know, you've got those one, two, three, four directly in front of them. Those are the closest four to the Anderson property also.
And then, and then the next house is-
The next house down there, driveway- The next house down there, driveway is right there, and their house is right here.
So, then you could have two apartment places. No, I'm just kidding.
Right here, the road's actually getting moved away from their house. Want me to make it bigger?
Yeah.
What was that, Will, what was that last comment?
I said, the, the people that just bought, I think, what was it, the Scott property?
Steven, Craig, yeah.
So, right here, this double line is existing curb. That's the side of the road.
Okay.
The new side of the road is out here.
They're gaining some.
So, they're actually gaining green space there in front of their house.
And the, and then the Flocks, you said, their house is?
Their house is right up in here.
Right up in there.
Can I ask a general question? And this is for the benefit of everybody, the board, and those here and those at home, and maybe Charlie and Will could both chime in on this. It's my assumption, and I want you guys to confirm that, that if we choose an alternative plan that does not change the current plan we have for Lime Rock and the intersection, in other words, the current plan that went out to bid has a certain plan for the location of Lime Rock Street and the new intersection. And that would leave us open to looking at parking alternatives on the other side of Lime Rock Street that included the ones that Deborah showed, which was the perpendicular, the parallel, and the angled parking. Is it correct to say that that, making that kind of a change order would be significantly less involved and probably less expensive than making a change order that made major changes to the street and the intersection?
Well, timing-wise especially. I mean, if, if, if everything here can stay the way it is, utilities, drainage, you know, all the underground stuff, and all we're talking about is making changes just to this strip right here where the parking is, that's relatively straightforward.
Yes, it's easy to deal with that change than it would be to make drastic changes to the intersection and where the location of the car is.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to get it on the record.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Will, could you, I don't know if it makes sense, it would help me, I think, if you, could you stake out the individual spots somewhere? I mean, physically, three dimensionally.
Oh, every one of the spots?
Yeah, or every couple of spots, or something that, you know, because right now, what you have staked out, right, is 14 spaces.
Right. What I've staked out now is, is a stake here at the end of the parking space, edge of the road, the back of the space, and the back of the sidewalk.
Right.
And then I went to the midpoint down here.
That's what I was wondering, that is the midpoint?
Well, I can't remember if it was exactly the midpoint, or if it was where the, where the angle break was right here, but it's about right in, right in the middle.
Okay, I meant to ask you that.
And we did another spot at the beginning, back in the back of the sidewalk, and then we did the, the end.
Well, since these guys here to my right are talking about four spaces, they've got four spaces on their minds, would you, no, no, I'm just saying.
It's a number. It's like my accountant, whatever you want it to be.
Well, I was just curious, yeah, okay. So, I'm just wondering if you, oh, I don't know, if you, I was going to say if you put a stake where the four, you know, where 10 spaces is, just.
Let me ask another question, though, and I don't mean to embarrass Will.
I'm having so much fun, keep going.
When you sit here at the meeting tonight and you send your crew out to stake things and everything, you're not doing that out of the goodness of your heart, I assume.
Not yet.
So, I guess my, my next question becomes, you know, all of this kind of fussing around that we do, how's that, I'll ask Rick, how's that going to get paid for?
It costs us money, yes.
Yeah, but who?
It's going to come out of the.
Where, in what budget?
Comes out of the bond.
This year?
Right. No, it comes out of the.
Is it a soft cost?
It'll be a soft cost in the budget.
You have to be very careful, and I don't mean to speak out of term, but Will's work is related to parking in the intersection, the civil engineering work that's not in the budget.
Oh, that's right, too, yeah.
So, be very careful what you say, please, Charlie.
We have been tracking all of our work in three different categories, the intersection, parking, and the building.
Right.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need, I retract the suggestion of every space to the extent that I made that. But it's good to know that you, that that one space, which I kind of thought was a midpoint, is a midpoint.
I actually sent to Rick an email, and I can't remember who else I might have copied on it, but I could send you exactly which locations we staked.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I know it's the two ends, I just can't remember in the middle which ones we did.
Yeah, it's the middle one that I didn't know either, that I didn't understand.
But I could, I could send you a little sketch that just has a red dot where each of those stakes are relative to that plan.
That'd be helpful. Will, in that picture, how many trees come down again?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All right, but in the perpendicular parking area, because if you leave the ones over on Union alone, in the perpendicular parking area, how many trees come down?
Two.
Two plus one stump.
I like this stump.
But I think, quickly, because I don't want to get into a lot of public comment again at this point.
According to the landscape person, how many of those trees are actually worth saving and are not going to die within the next five, six years anyway?
Yeah, I haven't, I don't, I know that some of them are not in great health, but I couldn't tell you that.
And I'm going to say something unpopular, I'm sure, with the Parks Committee, but, you know, as much as I want to see us preserve as much of the park as possible, I'm definitely, you know, leaning to that, I also take your point about, you know, the value of those, I mean, trees, and also, you know, you're going to tear up this park by all the staging and all the other construction stuff that's going to take place. And I think that, you know, hopefully that we and garden committee and others will, will take this as an opportunity, no matter where we find, wind up, to really create a better park, a prettier park, with little niches and nice little things than we've ever had before.
I couldn't agree more. I think that park is going to look a lot better, no matter what we do, as far as what parking plan we use, when we're all finished, that area is going to look nicer than it does now. The memorials are going to have a more prominent location. That was, that's going to be in a subsequent year.
That's what I said, garden committee, whatever. But when you, when you.
We've already, let me just address that for a minute. I've already asked the garden club to start to look into this. I haven't heard back yet from them, but I've asked them to look into sort of taking on a challenge, because there's a year and a half till that happens. And I'm hoping we can get the Parks Committee and the garden club involved and start to look into the fundraising and all that, so I'm hoping they'll, they'll respond.
Let's, let's get back. No, 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 no. We're going to provide a design.
Just to be involved in the process.
Let's, let's get back to where we are on the agenda here, and that's to talk about the process here. Let's sort of get back to that. And I heard from a couple people down that way that they didn't want to make a decision this evening and wanted time to process things. And I heard from some others who said they'd like to make a decision tonight, so certainly we can put it on the, April's going to be a long meeting, April 8th, because we've got the whole warrant to do, we've got public hearings, we've got a lot to do, so it'll be a long night. I'm willing to put it on that night, or, or have a, have a second meeting to talk about that.
I'll bring my sleeping bag. I'm okay. You know, I, I think, I think the worst thing we can do is let it drag on. And so, I think that either we put it on April, or we make a decision tonight, but I would really rather see it on April.
Specifically, what are we looking for to accomplish in April that hasn't already come to form today or?
Well, I'm getting the sense that, that the board wants to make the decision on what the parking plan is going to be. In other words, not, not going toward a town vote. And like I say, I have my own feelings about that, which I've expressed, but I'm only one member of this board. And so, I'm getting the sense that this board is moving toward making a decision on the parking plan that we're going to move forward with. Do I, do I have that wrong, my fellow board members?
I ask, when's our meeting in April?
April 8th.
I'd say by the end of the day of April 8th, we picked a path and off we go.
By the end of the meeting, you mean?
Yeah, by the end of the meeting.
Okay. That may end up being April 9th.
Might be April 9th, yeah.
I'm like, Jeff, that's my birthday, and I won't be here on April 9th.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I think, I mean, I, and that's a good point, actually. I think we should use the time while Will is here to ask any more substantive or factual questions of him that we want to ask.
I don't have any more.
I feel that I have a grasp of where I would like to go with this, and I've expressed that, and I think, you know, I don't know where others are. Others down at this end of the table may have that, but not want to express it, you want to allow time to process what you've heard tonight. I don't know.
I have one question, Will. I'm sure I could figure it out if I looked at this, but you, you could tell me without my having to do that. If I were to walk off those parking spaces myself?
Yep.
As Doug has done, how many, what's the width of each space?
Nine feet.
Twice as many steps as Doug took.
Nine feet.
Thirty-six feet.
Nine feet, he said.
Thirty-nine feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just ask my colleagues, you know, what's really going to change in the next two weeks? You know, we've sort of been talking about this for years, as we heard tonight. You know, people will weigh in. I understand that. You might talk to some more neighbors, and, I mean, what's really going to change? You know, we've had, we've heard from the experts tonight. You know, it's just two more weeks of agony.
Not agony unless you make it agony. I mean, unless we make it agony ourselves. I think we need to get public input from what we hear and see from the live stream tonight. We may get additional input. Two weeks for this, I don't think is much to ask.
It's not, but we've had public input for at least a year and a half, and you see how far it's gotten us.
That's one of those things I wouldn't agree on, but, but in any event, I, you know, I think that, I think that the public should specifically weigh into us on what their thoughts are with respect to perpendicular parking, only less parking. Feel free to fill up our inboxes. Well, and I say that because I hear two people going that direction, and I think I hear, you know, some openness to it on this side of me, so, you know, I think that that's what people should, that's one thing people might want to comment to us on.
Yeah, I'm very tempted to make a motion, but I'm not going to, because it would, you know, would make some of my colleagues uncomfortable, so, you know.
And I appreciate that, actually, because I think one of the best things this board could do would be to take a little bit of time and then come up with a more unified position than we might this evening. I think that's important in terms of the town. I think it's important in terms of the fundraising. You know, as I said at the outset tonight, this is an exciting time for Rockport, because we're going to get a new library here in the next year and a half or so, something that we've worked long and hard for. We have this one last decision we have to make, and if we can make that in a collaborative way and hear some input, and we've, you know, we've made, a couple of us have stated a way possibly forward with this, and some others have said, "Well, maybe that would work, but I want a little more time." And so, if we can get some input on that, that allows everybody to feel a little bit more comfortable with it, then maybe we can, we can make that decision in a couple of weeks. Am I getting nods from?
You're getting nods.
Yeah, especially since we just got done with two hours of trying to do some consensus building. We could take a little consensus building time for ourselves, I think.
Okay. Okay. I think we're finished with items five and six. The next item on the agenda was action on an agreement between the Rockport Library Foundation and the town. That's not quite ready for prime time at this point.
Thank you, Will.
But we have had some developments, and some board members are aware of that. First of all, the foundation did make a payment today for a large portion of the invoice that was sent to them a couple of weeks ago, which we had the meeting about last week, and they have stated to me, some board members have, that they're just checking some things on the remaining part and expect to make that payment fairly soon. They have met, they have worked on an agreement with the town, and while they've come to sort of a draft agreement or a consensus on the framework of that agreement, it's not quite ready for prime time. We will have that probably within a week or so, so that probably will go on our April 8th agenda as well. And Rick and I met with some, some of the foundation board members late last week to just sort of have an initial discussion about that, and, and I think that the framework of the agreement is going to be fairly simple. It's going to be that they will agree to pay for things that are included in the $3.5 million budget, not the things that are outside of that, like the intersection and things of that nature, and will work out. And Megan was with us for that meeting and talked about the timing of paying of invoices, and that'll all be included. They'll include their bylaws, their mission statement. One thing they wanted to make clear that they couldn't include would be an absolute guarantee that they'll come up with the entire amount, which is understandable, given the science of, the art and the science of fundraising, and I'm looking at my board members out there in the audience, but that they would be willing to make a statement that they'll, in connection with their mission statement, that they will be working extremely hard to meet their goals. And I think that that's, that's going to be fine. Yes?
Related, but the cost of the parking, whatever option, whichever path we choose, that coming out of the bond? Because currently, there's nothing in the budget.
It was folded into the $3.5 million budget, and this was another topic that we had in discussion with the foundation, is that we will make sure that when those invoices come in for the parking, that they are paid with bond proceeds. And that's important to the foundation, because their donors are interested in the building, and they want to make sure that their donations go.
And I just want to make sure, you know, for public record, we have that clarified here at this.
Yeah, I mean, Charlie wasn't happy with that, because, you know, that's $150,000 bucks that he wasn't counting on in his budget, but it is what it is, and he worked the numbers to make it. There's going to have to be some value engineering.
Well, we'll see when the bids come in.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And this agreement that we're going to be given will be viewed by our representative.
It's probably going to be a memorandum of understanding, which is the term for it, and we'll, we can run it by our town council very quickly. I don't think it'll take very long. It's not going to be very complicated.
I didn't say, I just was, you know.
And I'm sure the foundation is running it by theirs as well.
Yeah. If they don't raise the money, they'll just dig into their own pocket.
Could you come on up to the mic?
Yeah.
There are rules.
There are rules, yeah.
I would just encourage you, when you do vote on the parking, that as, that it, if it can be unanimous, that will go a long way in helping settle everything down. And so, it sounds like you're on that road, working in that direction, and I just want to express how important that is, I think, to healing the community more and helping us move forward, and I'm assuming it will be some kind of a compromise.
That sounds like a very good legislative speech.
Well, and that's the reason for waiting the two weeks, I think, is that I think that that gives us a much better chance to work toward that. Okay.
Helen.
Helen.
These are the hardcore people now.
Okay, I'm putting on my hat as vice chair of the Budget Committee. Tomorrow, we have another meeting to go over how the budget's going to finally look, and I know the last meeting we had, I still had some questions. Can we look at that again tomorrow, make sure we all understand that there's enough money in the present budget for 2019, 19, or 2019 to 2020, to cover what's going on before the bond comes through and everything? I want to make sure that we are absolutely happy, safe, and, and everything is covered in that.
Can you do that, Rick?
Yeah, I think Megan put that together at one point, but where's the money for the intersection?
Right.
The money for the parking, which was rolled into the $3.5 budget?
Until all the bids come in, we're not going to know.
But we can get, we can, we can say what's in the budget, though.
Right, it's in the.
So, we can make sure that the Budget Committee and the Select Board understand that. Okay, we have to take a vote this evening, because we were awarded the bond for the library. And so, it was, the funds won't come through for a certain time, but, but it was approved, and so, we have to take a vote, and I don't know whether anybody else has it or not, or we have to read this whole thing, I think. This is a vote, basically, that authorizes the treasurer, who is the town manager, and the chairman of the Select Board, to actually issue the bonds and to sign for it and all that sort of stuff. It's a long.
Has to be read into the record.
Yeah, it does. And, Linda, do you have a copy of it? Okay, well, we'll make sure you get a copy, but, okay. I will make the motion, then I'll spare everybody else. I will make the motion that, number one, that pursuant to the approval by the town meeting of Article II of the special town meeting warrant from November 6, 2018, which approved a project consisting of the design, site preparation, construction, and equipping of a new library building, including all of their expenses reasonably related thereto the project, the Select Board is utilizing its authority to issue general obligation securities of the Town of Rockport Main for the project. Number two, that the treasurer and chairman of the Select Board be authorized to issue a general obligation bond or bonds to the main municipal bond bank in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 for the purpose of funding the project. Number three, that the treasurer and chairman be further authorized to fix the dates, maturities, denominations, interest rate, place of payment, form and other details of said securities, including the execution, sale and delivery of said securities against payment therefore. Number four, that the treasurer and chairman be further authorized to execute a loan agreement with the Maine Municipal Bond Bank in such form as the bank may require, that the clerk is directed to affix the corporate seal thereto and attest the signatures of the treasurer and chairman and to file a copy of said loan agreement when signed with the records of this meeting, although the attesting and affixing of the corporate seal thereto shall not be deemed essential to the validity of the loan agreement and that the bonds are hereby sold to the Maine Municipal Bond Bank at par. Number five, that the Select Board hereby confirms its determination that the term of the bond does not exceed 120% of the economic life of the project. Number six, that the bonds are designated qualified tax exempt obligations of the town under the provisions of Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. Number seven, that the treasurer and chairman of the Select Board are hereby authorized to execute and deliver any and all documents and certificates and to take any and all actions, including affixing the seal of the town as may be necessary or convenient to carry out the full purpose and intent of the foregoing vote. Do I have a second?
What second?
Would you say can?
I'd be really mean and say, Linda, could you read that back?
I just sent it to you, Linda.
I believe there was a second.
Yeah, there was a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? And any opposed? No, and I will note that that is a unanimous vote. Okay, we do have a brief executive session this evening, that's why I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second. We got to, we got to make sure we cite the statute, sorry.
Yeah, I move, we move into executive discussion to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA, Section 405, 6A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? I want to check one thing before we go.
Happy birthday, Joe Hamilton.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy 60th.